Good evening and welcome to the Paso Robles Planning Commission of March 14th, 2023. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and if you would, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item C on our agenda is roll call. Staff would please conduct the roll call. Commissioner Christensen.
Present.
Commissioner Connolly.
Present.
Commissioner Kovarubius.
Here.
Commissioner Davis. Commissioner Marlowe.
Here.
Commissioner Neal.
Here.
Commissioner Kogler.
Here.
Record will reflect that Commissioner Davis is absent. She had a family emergency. Okay. And if you're a student of roll calls, you did notice there are two new names you probably hadn't heard before. So I would like to formally welcome Pat and Eric to the Planning Commission in a bit larger public forum than was the last time we were together. So, welcome. We look forward to working with both of you and the rest of the commission. Okay. Item E on our agenda is election of Chairperson and Vice Chairperson of the Planning Commission. And I would like to kick that off with a quick comment and then probably a motion. Past practice and patterns have been that the pro tem moves into the chair position on an annual basis. And when we were together about a year ago, Mr. Neal was the pro tem and wasn't in a position to assume the chair, and so I continued for a second year. At this point in time, Joel, I think,'s schedule has gotten a little more rational, at least I hope so. And I believe he's more amenable to the motion I'm going to make, which would be to advance Joel Neal to the Chairperson of the Paso Robles Planning Commission. That is a motion, and it would take a second to proceed.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Kovarubius.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Kovarubius. Any further discussion or other nominations? Hearing none, I would ask for a roll call vote to be taken. Commissioner Kogler.
Aye.
Commissioner Kovarubius.
Aye.
Commissioner Neal.
Aye.
Commissioner Christensen.
Aye.
Commissioner Marlowe.
Aye.
Commissioner Connolly.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. Well, I guess I get to do the Vice President. Oh, he does, doesn't he? Yeah, you're no longer there. There, I'm gone. I'm taking my name tag and moving on.
So, before I dive in, I would like to very much thank former Chair Kogler for his two years of a hard and diligent effort as Chairperson of the Planning Commission. I think I probably threw him a curveball last year, but thank you again, Mark. So with that, I'll be accepting nominations for Vice Chair. If I don't hear anyone, I will make that nomination myself, and I nominate Ty Christensen for Vice Chair.
I will second that.
Any other nominations or further discussion? Seeing none?
Who is the second?
Mr. Kogler. Seeing none, call the roll.
Commissioner Neal.
Aye.
Commissioner Kogler.
Aye.
Commissioner Christensen.
Aye.
Commissioner Kovarubius.
Aye.
Commissioner Marlowe.
Aye.
Commissioner Connolly.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. So Vice Chair Christensen, you want to move over next to the chair?
There's a music stop.
I think we may have skipped over staff introductions.
Warren Fries, Community Development Director.
Marcy Reynoso and Ashley Peterson, Administrative Assistant. Also, Darcy Delgado is remote. She's an associate planner.
And with that, it's now time for general public comments regarding matters not on the agenda. Does anybody in the audience wish to speak for matters not on the agenda? Marcy, anybody online?
No callers.
Seeing none? Close that portion, and we'll start public. Any agenda items proposed to be tabled or rescheduled this evening?
There are none.
Great. And the next section is public hearings. Our first public hearing of the evening is a conditional use permit, 23-01 for an automobile dealership, P 23-002. Staff?
Katie Bannister, Associate Planner. So this, as you said, is a conditional use permit for a new motor car dealership to be located out on Combine Street. So here is an image of Combine Street. It's kind of a loop street, and the southwest corner is the new project site. This was formerly proposed to be used for CAPS construction. The both Planning Commission and DRC reviewed different site details for this site a number of times, but now a new use is proposed here, LVS Motor. I'm forgetting the name, Motor Cars. There we go. So, on. So the project requires, as I said, is a conditional use permit. This is a used auto dealership, but it is for kind of a niche market cars. These are special, I think, sometimes vintage cars and higher end vehicles. They are going, this project is going into an existing building. The building does have seven onsite outdoor parking spaces that would be available for customers and the employees to park in. In addition, there's an indoor showroom. It has space for about 15 to 20 cars. The parking that is being proposed on the site is car dealerships. There's not a specific parking ratio that's in our municipal code, and so there is a note within the parking standards that says when there's not specific parking requirements in interpretation of parking impacts and spaces, and parking spaces that are needed based on a similar use can be determined by the Community Development Director and ultimately by the Planning Commission. So this evening, staff is recommending that the onsite parking requirement be based on sort of the office and customer spaces, which would require, I believe, six parking spaces, but there are actually seven parking spaces required, or excuse me, provided. So a look at the operations for the business. They will be open Tuesdays to Saturdays from 9:00 to 6:00 p.m. There'll be three employees working on the site, and as I said in a previous slide, 15 to 20 vehicles can fit in that showroom for viewing and purchase. But the business does also include an e-retail component. I think a lot of the business gets done on the internet. So people do, will come to the site to look at cars, but they'll also have the opportunity to have that interaction online. The business does not include any vehicle service nor part sales, so that all the trips to the site will be for those looking at the cars there in the showroom. So here is a look at the site and floor plan. There on the bottom left, you can see that there is that large indoor vehicle showroom, but then there's the conference room and offices there off to the east side of the, I guess I'm stating that wrong because north would be to the left here. So on the south portion of the building is where you've got the customer and conference room areas. So the office and lounge is just about 2,000 square feet. You've got almost 3,000 square feet of showroom. You can get a look at the, a peek at the elevations there. So the existing site, looking at the colors and landscaping, these are recent pictures. This is a recently installed site, so it's fully landscaped. All the finishes are on the building. Here you see an image from the west at the top, and then there is an enclosure at the rear. The enclosure did go through several rounds of DRC review, even the setback for that. The fence was reviewed by the Planning Commission as well, and so here is the fence in place. So one of the questions that the DRC had about the project was how do the vehicles get into the building? There is a roll-up door on the west side of the building, and then you can see in the bottom what that showroom space will look like. So there's some, there's some storage in there now for CAPS construction, but ultimately that will go and the vehicles for sale will be shown in that showroom. There is one sign proposed. It would be on the south-facing elevation. It's a black metal backer with a laser cut logo, and it will be LED backlit. The dimensions of the sign are four feet by eight, four feet tall by eight feet wide. You can see it there, superimposed on the elevation at the bottom as well. So we are recommending some changes to the draft resolution. We would like to add, we would like the Planning Commission to add one whereas recital, or excuse me, it would be an amendment to one of the whereas statements. As you can see, it would, instead of saying that it's, that the applicant is requesting a reduced parking requirement, instead you would be making a finding that seven onsite parking spaces would be the required parking for this use permit. In addition, in the draft resolution and the findings, the finding number four, we would recommend that some added language be put at the bottom so that the use is compatible with its location and based on the fact that the seven onsite parking spaces are determined to be compatible at this location based on the specific use and as allowed by the Paso Robles Municipal Code, Municipal Code, Table 21.22.01. There's a note that states that an interpretation can be made to set the parking needs based on parking impacts and needed parking based on the use. And then in the conditions of approval, staff is recommending that a condition 13 be added that would authorize the establishment of this luxury used car dealership within the existing building, and it would specifically call out that the parking requirement for this is seven parking spaces. In addition, a condition is recommended that would require if they make any changes to the project that result in changes to the floor plan, that would increase the size of that office, customer lounge area, it would require an amendment to this conditional use permit so that we can take another look at parking. The Planning Commission always has options the first, and what staff is recommending is that you approve the attached resolution with those recommended changes, that that would grant approval of the conditional use permit and allow seven onsite parking spaces. You could certainly make amendments or, and as we're recommending, changes to the resolution and continue to approve the conditional use permit. If the Planning Commission would like to reject the application, you would need to make specific findings that the project does not comply with any of the required findings. And that concludes staff's report. I believe we do have a representative from the business in City Hall with us this evening.
Great, Katie, thank you so much. I was wondering if you could go back to the changes to the conditions of approval? And those are the two changes?
So those would be the changes to the conditions of approval. The previous slide would be some changes to the language in the resolution itself.
So I'm looking at our conditions of approval on page 19, and I only have eight.
So those should probably be, probably be numbers nine and 10.
Okay, thank you. And then with that, I'll allow the applicant to speak. This is the time we usually do that, if they so wish.
Hello, my name is Michael Tenor. Do you have any questions?
We may. Do you have something?
I mean, she did a great job. I mean, everything, I would say she pretty much said it exactly. All of the vehicles will be stored inside overnight during the day. The parking area will be for customers. There's not a lot of staff that's going to be there, so it will not be taken up by a lot of staff. And, yeah.
Great, thank you. And with that, I'll ask, I'll ask the commission if they have any questions. Commissioner Marlowe, any questions? Of staff or the applicant?
Yeah, I'm just curious. Are you going to be washing and detailing cars at this location?
Everything else will be offsite. So detailing will be offsite, service will be offsite, all other aspects of the business are offsite.
Great. And then any plans for future expansion, additional employees?
Possibly future employees, but only like one or two at best, probably not for a while.
Cool. That's all I got.
Commissioner Connolly.
I have a question, I guess more for staff. If there's a change in ownership, a change in a business at this location, does the, does the conditional use permit get revisited or changed? Because you, you, this conditional use permit has specifics to this project, this owner and this business. If the business changes, does the conditional use permit get revisited? That's more for staff. Yeah.
So if another business wanted to, say, take over this operation and operate in the same way as this business, they could continue to operate under this conditional use permit. If they make any changes, like say they wanted to continue doing a car sales, but it, there were changes made to, you know, the operations, it would require an amendment to the conditional use permit if it's not consistent with the conditions you have, you would approve this evening. If some other permitted use, there, you know, there's lots of things that are permitted in the C3 zoning district that doesn't require a conditional use permit, they could, they could also operate, you know, without Planning Commission action. But what you're approving doesn't necessarily, isn't specific to this owner, but it is specific to the way this project is proposed.
Thank you. Commissioner Christensen.
Thank you, Katie. I have a couple of questions. When this project was originally approved, this building, I noticed, I'm very familiar with the neighborhood over there, that it's under 5,000 square feet. Was this building sprinkled, sprinkled at the time? And would it be required now that they're adding office space?
We're not adding. I'm sorry.
No, it sounds like the applicant is not, and there's nothing in this conditional use permit that would allow expansion of space. I'm not familiar whether or not the building was sprinkled. Darcy is on the line and was more involved in with the CAPS construction project. Darcy, do you happen to know whether or not fire sprinklers were installed?
I do not know if fire sprinklers were installed, but as Katie mentioned, if, you know, they're not changing the building square footage, and so if they weren't required with the building, you know, as the building was constructed and completed, that the request tonight did not, also not trigger any changes to fire sprinklers.
Thanks, Lori. So I'm just trying to make some clarification. So, because I was under the impression that there was added office space. Is there not a new lounge added with additional office space, or is that, was that original to the build-out? The customer lounge?
This is Darcy again. So the, what's shown on the site plan and the floor plan was originally, I believe, I can take a look, you know, dedicated office area. I believe that the applicant has just superimposed, you know, the terminology that they're using for their customer lounge. Maybe he can answer that a little bit better since he updated the site plan.
I can answer both of your questions. So no, there is no sprinklers. Devin, Mr. Katz stated that if it was over 5,000 square foot, it needed sprinklers. This building is 4814, I believe. As far as the customer lounge, that was going to be Devin Katz's showroom. So that is, nothing's been added or built out. That was originally in his plan. The conference room, offices, all of that stuff is all the same as it was for Devin.
Okay, so this is for staff. So essentially, if there's not a change in use, the requirements don't change, even though the square foot of the building satisfies what the original requirements were? Is that correct?
That's correct. If there's any changes that require building permit or occupancy changes, our building department can look at it and make sure that it's complying, but I don't believe it needs fire sprinklers.
Okay, okay. Then another question, one of the questions was answered about the detail, and that was a great question. How many employees are anticipated to be employed at this location?
So the applicant has stated at the initial, they anticipate having three employees, and then I think previously indicated in the future, they might like to add maybe one or two, is my understanding.
Okay. So was, and I was just trying to clarify this because the way I was reading it, I was a little confused. Were seven parking spaces originally onsite already?
That's right. The project was originally parked for a warehouse use, and so yes, seven parking spaces were provided. This is not exactly a warehouse. It's got a bit more customer orientation, but because, like if the showroom was an uncovered showroom, we wouldn't require parking for, you know, like we've got car dealerships along, along Theater Drive, and we don't make them, you know, provide parking for those parking spaces. So staff is recommending that we would treat this showroom similar to how we would treat an outdoor parking area. So we would just make the, we would recommend that the applicant provide parking for just the offices and conference, kind of the more human oriented areas.
Okay. I think I understand that. Thank you, Katie. Let's see. I think I've got another question. I'll let someone else ask some questions at this time.
Commissioner Kogler.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. The sign that's being proposed, there's a sign on the building right now that looks like this sign, but I don't believe it's in the same location. Can you tell me, is that the sign that's going to be relocated? Is that the sign? We're dealing with just one sign, not more than one?
The sign, I'm sorry. The sign that is on there right now was a temporary sign for DMV licensing, so it has to be a certain size at least. So it has to be a two-by-two sign next to the address for DMV purposes. When the sign goes up on the, the big sign goes up, that will still work because you can still take a picture of it and see the address and the big sign. So that is, that sign is temporary. It was actually, I'm going to go take it down tonight, actually. They came and did their inspection today.
So that sign is rectangular, though. It's not two-by-two?
Yeah, it's a two-by-three sign. It has to be a minimum of two-by-two.
So the one that'll be permanent will be larger and up higher?
Correct.
As proposed. Okay, very good. Thank you. Then another question for you quickly. Will you market through Bring a Trailer and similar auction sites?
Not 100% sure on that yet. A lot of online sources, so cars.com, CarGurus, things like that, possibly Bring a Trailer. I haven't looked into that yet.
So would that be the principal vehicle by which customers might come to look at a car if they happen to live in a geographic area and you advertise it on one of those forums? They may come and look at it. Do you see other scenarios in which the public actually comes to this site?
Correct, yes. So you would come and do your test drive and everything else if they needed to come to the area to purchase. We've definitely, I've been in the industry my whole life, so sometimes people don't even come to the dealership. They'll just buy and we'll deliberate to them.
And I assume occasionally you'd have a transport coming in to move product to and from?
Typically, yes. So if we were going to do something like that, we would put it on a truck.
You'd see a semi occasionally.
Not typically, not, not the way that we're going to do it. Our cars will be enclosed trailers.
Right. But people like Relab will have very large trucks that are enclosed trailers.
Yeah, I mean, some of them are, some of the diesel trucks.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's all.
Commissioner Kovarubius.
Thank you. To the applicant, real quick, just for the commission to hear this. The zoning requires that 25% be used vehicles, is that right, Katie? Right?
So what the zoning ordinance allows is that if this wasn't entirely new, if all the cars being sold on the, in the project were new, it's actually an allowed use. When you, when the applicant introduces used car sales, then it's a conditionally allowed use. And so he's here asking for a conditional use permit because he intends to sell used cars.
Used cars. So just to clarify, that is the main intent, vintage vehicles is what I'm really starting to hear. Is that accurate?
More along the lines of luxury vehicles. High-end luxury cars.
Okay.
But we also have a, have a taste for vintage vehicles as well, so.
Got it.
Luxury vehicle or luxury vintage specialty is what the name stands for.
Got it. Okay. All right, no other questions.
Thank you, Chairperson Neal. I know what my other question was, Katie. I had written on it. So you're saying that normally 15 spaces would be required, but we're saying that we're comfortable with seven? Is that what I read here?
So for a commercial use, for a building that's, I can't remember the exact size, 4,800 square feet, however much it is, if we were considering the whole building to be just a regular commercial use, it would require three parking spaces for every thousand square feet. So that would be, you know, so let's just call it five times three, you know, 14, 15. But because of the nature of what's being sold here, the sort of the widget that's being sold is so large, you know, we just don't expect as much customer turnover as we would if they were selling, you know, something smaller for, you know, 5,000 square feet of, say, computer parts or, you know, something of a smaller nature would take less space. I'm not explaining it very well, but because of the nature of the type of sales that are going on here, staff is recommending that seven parking spaces would be appropriate.
And so to that follow-up question on that, Katie, so with the, as part of the CUP, there's no way to really monitor the amount of traffic. Hopefully, you know, I'm sure they want to be successful, so, but we can't limit, you know, they're saying they're doing a lot of it online or via phone, and I'm sure they probably will today. Technology is great, but I'm sure that there'll be people wanting to come there. We haven't, in other words, there's not really a way to monitor that under the CUP. Is that correct?
So the intent of the CUP is to make sure that this business is compatible with the neighborhood. It's not a staff recommendation, but it is possible to review CUPs over time. We haven't really been in the practice of doing that, and I'm not really recommending it, but if, you know, if we are getting a lot of complaints, this business is causing, you know, too much parking, some sort of issue, we can review that and, you know, bring it back to the Planning Commission for your review. It'd be a fairly extreme case that where that would happen.
Okay, thanks. That's it for me. Sorry.
And I was on DRC when this was brought forward to DRC, and I don't have any questions at this time. As this is a public hearing, I'd like to open it up to the public. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this item? Please come up, state your name and address. Thank you.
My name's Jim McKenzie. I own the properties adjoining this. We've had a significant amount of problem with who will end up being his landlord. So I'm just trying to determine whether or not the person that's trespassed on our property, destroyed our property, done tons of things like that over the last couple of years is going to be the business owner. So I don't want to affect him. He has every opportunity to have to run a business, but it was presented to me that this was, he was partnering with the person we've had a lot of problem with. The problem I do have with it is we've had opportunity, we own four, the four lots behind this, and we've had opportunity to do, to build the suits, but because of the restraints of this, we were not able to accommodate that. So my fear is that if this is going to be accepted, then we have, all we have to do is say we're using it for one thing, then change our use, and then we can rent it for whatever we want. And, you know, we have a gym across the street that has very little use of total space because they needed so much parking. This kind of falls in the same category. I don't think they'll need as much parking, but it definitely brings a concern of what the rest of the development's going to be and what us previous owners were able to develop prior to this. So, that would be it.
Great, thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak to this issue? Seeing none? Marcy, anybody?
No callers.
Great. And with that, I will close. Public comment. I'm not sure there was a question there. So bring it back to the commission for additional comment and/or a motion.
Of course. Just a clarity question. I'm looking at page 19, under the conditions of approval. It says the project shall be constructed. I'm just, for clarity, the internal side of the property, is it already like this or it still needs to be enhanced? Do the TIs need to be done or it's already like this?
Everything is the way it's going to be.
Okay, so it's already pretty much done?
No, yeah, everything's done.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Commissioner Kogler.
No further discussion. If there's no other discussion, I'd be glad to offer a motion.
I do, I'm sorry. Commissioner Christensen?
Thank you.
I, I do have a concern over the, the way we're treating the parking. And I understand that there's the parking space now. My concern is for a lot of the, the businesses that did develop there, they took into account that parking when they built the building out and when they designed that building, knowing that there may be a future use issue down the road. So I hope that this doesn't set some type of precedent because I feel like it's, it's on the verge of that. And we're just kind of skirting it by using the, the storage space as, as where the, the new or new used cars would be, which I could understand, and I, I can see that for luxury cars making sense. I think that, again, I, I feel that we're kind of doing a workaround here to satisfy something that would have normally not been built in this way or probably approved if it wasn't, you know, the way they're proposing the design. And I do believe that there will be more employees there. So the parking and customers, I think, will be limited. Either the employees will be parking on the street or the, or the customers will be parking on the street. One of the two will probably take place unless they can park inside. So those are my thoughts.
Commissioner Conley?
I, I agree with Ty, you know, with his comments. I was going to, I was concerned whether it'd be off-street parking. And it doesn't look like it's provided here. So with the same concern that you have three, maybe four employees, that doesn't leave much space for customers. I agree.
Thank you. Commissioner Marlowe?
No further comments.
So I do have a question. There's a trailer sales down on the other corner, and I think they have two lots for that trailer sales yard. Do we happen to remember what the parking ratio was for that particular facility?
Sure. I think, this is Darren Nash, City Planner. So as you mentioned, that project used more than one lot. They used at least three, if I recall, maybe more. I don't remember what the specific ratio was, but the, they have quite a few parking spaces related to the trailer sales business. And then they work on them and have different work on repair-type bays. So they do have more, they do have more room for parking lots. They designed their building related to the type of use, as kind of mentioned here. You know, these buildings were kind of built as shell buildings or warehouses with, with some office use, and that's how many of them are. But to answer your question, the trailer sales has much more room. They built it for trucks, trailers, and the way, and their ability to maneuver that. And they purchased the, the building, the, the side in the building to accommodate that. I think a lot of the lots in the Combine area are small. A lot of times they were, I don't remember. This may have been two lots before and had to be combined to get this size. I know a lot of the development in this area, the lots were just small historically. And a lot of times, more than one were used to get what's out there now. I think the way to look at this is we have an existing building, an existing parking. And the parking was designed to accommodate a warehouse with an office. And with this, this one happened to have a small showroom. This, this probably has more parking spaces than many on Combine that were more specifically warehouses. So the, the request tonight is for this used-to-go-in here. And the used-to-go-in, one of the reasons used car lots require use permits is where do the cars park? A lot of times, used car lots have wall-to-wall cars, and they're stored outside and all that kind of thing. And they can be an eyesore at times, and that's why CUPs are required for that and not required for new car sales because new car sales are typically dealerships. For this, for this project, I think the, the, the cars are being stored inside where any product would have been stored inside, no matter what the use is here. This happens to be cars. They have their office. They store the cars inside. The use permit requires the cars to be stored inside. The question then comes, is this use, is this auto-repair use in this area compatible? And I think that's what the question has to come down to, the parking. Parking is allowed on the streets. You can park on the streets. But we try to keep the required parking on-site. So the question before, and the question the applicant, the applicant has explained to us that this project can accommodate the employees and customers within the seven parking spaces. So the question before the commission is whether that seven parking spaces is, seems adequate for this business that has the products stored inside. It is really what we're at. So there are uses that come in that, in these lots, that propose more parking, and it just can't be done. This one is, is saying, is this use permit appropriate here based on the current parking? One of the, one of the options could be no. It isn't, and the commission would need to make findings that, that the parking is not sufficient for the use being proposed. And tell us why.
Great. Thank you very much. And with that, I will, oh, yes, go ahead.
Sorry, all the parking conversations spurred a question. If there's seven spots, any of them required to be handicapped?
And I think of the site plan up there indicates that one of the seven is.
One, okay. I didn't see that. Okay, thank you.
Any further questions or comments?
Yeah. So in the event you get too many cars because you're doing well, you get a bunch in, think some are going to sell, then don't sell. And you can't fit them all inside. What's your plan? What are you going to do?
I don't have a plan for that because I don't expect that to happen. So I'm not trying, I have, I'm the purchaser, so I will be purchasing as needed. So I will not, I, I want all my cars inside for, for, to keep them out of the elements. It's a better, for me, the whole reason I'm trying to do a warehouse and not your typical car lot is I feel it's a better experience for the customer. When we have 110-degree days, we're inside. When we have rain, like today, we're inside. I don't want to outgrow this area. So that this is the area that I want to be in. This is the, the way it is right now is how I want it to be. I'm not looking to add 50 more cars.
Sure, sure.
My point of not letting it happen is I would not let it happen.
Great. And then if it, okay, I, I trust you. But beyond that, if it does happen and cars are being left out, is there any sort of repercussion behind that?
Yeah, if, so the, the, the resolution before you would require all of the, the vehicles for sale to be stored indoors. If that starts occurring outdoors, they would be in violation of the conditional use permit and enforcement would occur.
Great, thanks.
Any further questions? Enterating the motion?
Mr. Chair? First, a quick statement. I, when I first looked at the packet and saw used car dealership, I went, oh, really? But when I read it, and I've actually been a customer of these types of businesses in a couple of different places, and it's very low-key, I'm comfortable that the parking will work, and I'm also comfortable that we have controls in place that should any aspect of this business get out of hands and the bounds of what we talked about, we have the ability to reel you in, so to speak. So I'm comfortable with that. With that, I would offer a motion that we approve conditional use permit, 21, or 23-01 permitting a luxury used car dealership, 3528 Combine Street, with the identified changes that were brought forward tonight, the whereas change, the change to Section 2 on findings, and then the two conditions of approval adding number nine and number 10.
I have a, a motion by Commissioner Kogler. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the vote.
Commissioner Kogler?
Aye.
Commissioner Marlowe?
Aye.
Commissioner Conley?
Aye.
Commissioner Christensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Koverbius?
Aye.
Chairperson Neal?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
And the next item on the agenda is conditional use permit, applicant John Allen for the Loyal Order of Moose, a request for a conditional use permit to establish a private meeting facility within an existing building at 63528th Street. May I have a presentation from the staff? Thank you.
Thank you, Chairperson Neal. So the applicant did provide an additional piece of information that I'll pass out right now. Okay. Katie Bannister, Associate Planner, again. So as you said, this is a new location for, proposed for the Moose Lodge. Here is a map of the area. This is on the north end of Spring Street. You can see in orange towards the bottom right of your screen, the current location of the Moose Lodge. There is a mixed-use project that is proposed and is under construction there on that site at 26th and Spring. And so the Moose needs to find a new location. So they have located this building at 63528th Street, which is at the northwest corner of 28th and Spring, just a few blocks down the road. So this project is in the Uptown Town Center specific plan. It's in the T4F zoning district. That's a mixed-use zone. The, in that zone, meeting facilities, which is how staff is defining the Moose Lodge, is a conditionally allowed use. The building is about 4,500 square feet in size. Parking for this use would be one parking space for every 400 square feet, which would be 11 parking spaces. Here's a look at the site. So in orange is the building where the Moose would be located. There is a, a kitchen towards, it's in the northwest corner of the building. And that is proposed to be used as a separate use, sort of a commissary kitchen for caterers and so forth. And we'll have some discussion about that the, as the slides progress. But, and then when we jump into conditions as well, because there's a number of conditions related to having that separate use in the building. The Moose Lodge does have two access points. I've got them there in green. There's sort of the main door, which is at the bottom right. And then there is a secondary egress towards the rear of the building. There's a condition of approval that would require, currently, the panic bar is not, or at least a few weeks ago, when the fire marshal and the building official and I visited, the panic bar was not fully functional. And so that is a requirement before the Moose can get going, that that, that that be repaired. But there are two points of, of exit, which is important for an assembly use like this. There is also an access point to that commissary kitchen. Currently, it's a roll-up door, which is not adequate egress for users of that kitchen. So at the point in time when that kitchen is permitted, a, a different type of door would need to be installed. We'll be discussing, now you can see the little blue triangle, or excuse me, square in the bottom right-hand corner, there is an existing sign there on the site. And the planning commission will need to decide action on that sign. And then the whole, the, I believe there's two properties, but there's one owner for the property just to the north of this site. It's, the parking lot is oriented as if it's one large area. So in purple there, that is an auto-repair use that's existing on the site. So the temporary food service, which is what this food truck court would be considered, is a temporarily, temporarily allowed use in the T4F zoning district. So staff has approved a temporary use permit to allow a food truck court on this parking lot. There's a lot of parking on this site. There's actually 83 spaces on both properties, both the, the auto-repair area and the restaurant site. So a lot of parking spaces. Only 11 are required for the entire building where the Moose and this commissary kitchen would be located. The auto-repair shop to the north needs five parking spaces. 20 parking spaces would be covered by the food truck area. And then if we pretended that those food trucks were in one enclosed building, which would be about 3,200 square feet, that would require eight parking spaces. So that leaves you with 39 spaces that are not required for any use that's proposed on-site. DRC was concerned about parking because there is a lot of, of uses being proposed on the site. But just for information, they, there is adequate parking for what is required. So that's what this slide is meant to, to indicate. So jumping into the floor plan, I've rotated it so that north continues to be up. I apologize for making it hard to read. But you can see there that there's the kitchen area. That's not a part of the Moose Lodge lease. So it's a separate area. But within the Moose area, there is a separate kitchen. And then they'll have pool tables and a, and a bar area. And so this is where the Moose will be operating. As I said, there are those two egress points in the Moose portion of the lease area. And there's that kitchen area. So here's a picture of the Moose Lodge kitchen area, just for reference. We've been working with the city wastewater manager and the fire marshal to make sure that the operation of this kitchen is safe and meets all the health, health department standards and so forth. And the applicant is actively working both with, with city staff and with the health department to make sure that they can meet all those codes. So there is a bit of, of delayed maintenance on, on the property. It's, you know, and not in its, in its best state. This was obviously Wilson's Restaurant for many years, and then the Paradise Grill operated here for about five years. Here's some additional pictures. The landscaping is in need of a facelift. The building itself, and these are a few weeks ago. I haven't been by in the last few days, so I'm not sure if any painting has occurred. But, you know, we're still seeing remnants from the previous signage. A very bold stripe at the top, the green and orange colors. So there are conditions of approval that would require the building to be repainted in some sort of an earth-tone palette, more, more traditional for a commercial project. This is from, looking, from the alley looking towards the, the Moose Lodge building and that auto-repair use as well. There is a sign at the corner of the, the property. It's an unusual sign. It's about six feet tall. And I'd say the sign bases are approximately five feet by five feet, so about 25 square feet on each side. There are four sides to this sign, which, as I said, is a bit unusual. The applicant has provided some sort of options for how that sign might be reused. Staff is recommending that instead of refacing this sign, you know, that this, a monument sign is, is certainly possible here, but it needs to be a sign that complies with the Uptown Town Center specific plan and the sign ordinance. So standards for that would be six-foot maximum height, but only 32 square feet in sign area. When we look at any freestanding sign, we don't, if, you know, on a traditional freestanding sign, you would have basically two sides, you know, like north and south, whereas this one has the four sides. For a traditional side, we, if one side is 32 square feet, we would not count the additional reverse side as sign area. That would count as 32 square feet. As I said, what we're looking at is a sign with approximately 100, it's 25 square feet on each side, which would be approx, you know, we've got two times that, it would be approximately 50 square feet. So the municipal code does not allow non-conforming sides to be altered, to change the sign copy unless the sign is made to comply with the provisions of the sign ordinance. In addition, the sign ordinance also allows the planning commission to impose conditions to require that any existing incompatible or non-conforming signs be removed and brought into conformance. So the, the, the draft resolution, actually, they omitted the, the condition inadvertently. So I've got a, a slide to show you what would be proposed. a slide to show you what would be proposed. But staff is proposing that this sign be brought into conformance to be reduced in size and possibly removed and replaced or redesigned, depending on Planning Commission guidance and ultimately DRC guidance as well, when we get a compliance sign proposed. As I said, I showed in some of the previous slides, the landscaping is, needs an uplift. And so we do have a landscape plan proposed, which would put new landscape plantings within all of the existing planter areas. So jumping into the conditions of approval, I've color-coded those that really pertain more to the Moose Lodge, and then, and those are the black-colored conditions, and then those in red that really have more to do with the potential for a commissary kitchen. And so the Moose, they need to make sure they provide that proper egress, as we discussed. They need to repaint the building and install landscaping. Any future signs for the Moose would need to go through DRC review. We don't have any signs proposed for the Moose at this time. Looking at the potential for a commissary kitchen, I think one of the most important things is that there is currently a temporary use permit for the food truck court, and that temporary use permit would need to be amended. So a standalone commissary kitchen, where there's not any sort of food service, we would consider to be a food and kindred products, which is more of like a manufacturing-type use. That's not actually a use that's allowed in the T4F zoning district, and so staff is recommending that the commissary kitchen be allowed as a part of that temporary use permit. The food service portion would be the food trucks, and the commissary kitchen would be to support those food trucks. And so the TUP would need to be amended in order to account for that commissary kitchen and any signage that is proposed. So that's condition number 11. And then there's a series of health and safety requirements for the, that commissary kitchen, including a grease interceptor, health department permits. The applicant for the commissary kitchen will need to seek a building permit to provide adequate separation between the Moose and that kitchen, to make sure that if there was ever a fire in the commissary kitchen, it wouldn't spread to the Moose area. The document that you were given this evening indicates that the fire suppression systems for the two different kitchens are actually separate. So it sounds like one of the conditions there, the kind of part B on number nine, is already addressed. So it sounds like they already have separate fire suppression systems. But the condition is there to make sure that our fire marshal is able to confirm and make sure that those, that separate fire suppression is provided. Staff is recommending to add two additional conditions related to the freestanding sign. The first is that the freestan, before the freestanding sign can be used, it needs to be brought into conformance with the sign standards, and it would be subject to DRC review. The sign is actually very close to being what's considered abandoned by the sign ordinance. If a sign is not used for 180 days, it needs to be removed. It's considered an abandoned sign. So I've got the date there. March 31st would be 180 days, according to social media. The Paradise Grill stopped operations on October the 2nd of last year, which, so 180 days would be March 31st. So the recommended condition would be that if we don't get an application to even consider bringing the sign into conformance before March 31st, that sign would just need to be removed, based on that section of the code that you see there. So with all conditional use permits, the Planning Commission has to make a series of findings in order to approve it. So basically, you're looking to find that the use is compatible with the neighborhood. I checked in with our police department to find out if they've had trouble with the Moose Lodge over the years. They've been operating at their site on 26th Street for many years, and the police department was very pleased to find that they would be replacing Paradise Grill, which was a use that they had had some trouble with over the years. So the police department was very comfortable with the Moose coming to this location. There are some residences that are just, you know, immediately adjacent to the site. So I thought that was a good sign that the police department was encouraged. The Planning Commission has to make a series of findings, though, that the, basically that this project is compatible with the neighborhood, that it's not detrimental to our efforts to revitalize our downtown, and then that the proposed land use is compatible with our plans and policies that we have adopted here in the city. So staff, you also need to make a secret determination, and that the recommended determination is that this is a Class 1 exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act, and that's included in your draft resolution. So as always, the Planning Commission has options. The first would be to approve the draft resolution. To approve that, the conditional use permit, you could modify and approve the resolution, and staff has provided some recommended modifications. And then if the Planning Commission wants to deny the conditional use permit, you would need to make findings of denial. Staff's recommendation is to approve the project, to approve the draft resolution. As I said, we do have a couple of amendments to recommend, but staff is recommending approval of the project. I believe that is the end of my report. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Katie. This time, we usually open it up to the applicant for comments, if the applicant wished to come up and make comments. If they do, please state your name and address. Thank you.
Hello. You just want an opening from, what I do have is...
Sorry, what was your name? Excuse me, name and address, please.
Pardon? Oh, I'm John Allen. I'm the administrator of the Moose Lodge, so.
Right, thank you.
One of the items was talked about is the grease dispenser. Can I get my glasses? I can't read my own notes.
Interceptor.
Inter, interceptor. We have ordered it. I have the bill here. Brian and Patty from, I think, Water Waste Management came by onsite Friday, I believe it was. Brian was happy with what he saw. I have a couple, I have a few pictures, if you're interested in seeing, with the three sinks and where that's going to be. But if not, Brian, Brian's biggest concern was having the grease moved away from the hot water and where we told him it was going to be. He was fine with that, and he said, "Just go ahead and get it." The triple grease is well-known around here and respected, and Brian knew him and they do the kind of work they do. So that should be in, maybe by the end of this week. Well, I was pleased, being a retired police officer from Roy Grantie after 31 years, and the Moose was in that existing building, or there, established in 1980 that the police department had anything negative. The three years I've been administrator, I enforce any problems that we might have, and that only be if somebody may be using foul language or something, I can suspend their membership for a couple of weeks, and that hurts them more than maybe even getting arrested. So we are, we police our own people, and we don't, we're not a rowdy crowd. Sometimes I explain, when the battalion, fire chief for battalion chief came over and talked about having two entries and exits sent, I says, "Well, most of our people, if we had a fire, they'd have to get their wheelchairs and start moving themselves out." So we have more of a senior crowd. We're trying to get some youth in there, but right now, they're all about my age, you know, 35, 40, so.
And just to follow, what are the typical hours of the Moose?
We open right now, and it's been the hours, we're not going to change them. We open at 11:00 a.m., Monday through Saturday, and we're scheduled to close at 8:00, but sometimes it's slow when they get up, 7:00 o'clock. And 8:00 is our closing time. And then if we do have, like, you know, a New Year's Eve party, I always use East Coast time. So at 9:00 is our 12:00. So we're, you know, we're not staying out till midnight, causing, you know, loud noises and stuff. On Sundays, we do have breakfast, so we open up at 9:00 in the morning, and we close at 7:00 p.m.
Great, thank you. With that, I'll open it up to questions from the commission. Commissioner Kogler?
A few questions of staff. The food truck operation, is that ever really operated?
As far as we are aware, no, it is not.
Okay, so it's permitted, but it hasn't happened. Who owns, is it the owner of the property that has the food truck operation, or is it yet an independent operator?
The applicant for that TUP was the owner of the property.
Okay. And you've talked about adding in the sale of onsite food as part of the, essentially, food truck approval, kind of merging those two. Food truck approval, though, was a staff approval, was it not? So would the addition of the onsite sale of food be a staff function or a planning commission function?
So staff generally approves business licenses, you know, those don't generally come before the planning commission. So when we, we actually have received an application for the commissary kitchen, which it would not include on its own sort of onsite sales, but with the food truck court, there is that link where there would be food, you know, onsite sales of food. And so staff's recommendation is that we would allow it because of the food truck court, but it would need to be tied to the food truck court. But, you know, that's an interpretation that we're making, and certainly the planning commission could weigh in on that.
Going to the freestanding sign, are freestanding signs allowed in the district?
Yes, they are.
Okay, and up to what heights?
Six feet.
Okay, that's, and this one is at six feet, if I remember the black?
I did not go out and measure it, but it's approximately six feet. I could certainly confirm before.
Okay, but there's no record that that was ever permitted or approved?
I could not find a record. I tried to go back in, like, aerial photographs and Google Street View, and it was just sort of always there, but photos don't go back far enough to really say. But I could not find a building permit nor a planning entitlement for it.
Okay, and the conditions of the approval that's been already put forward by staff for the food truck operation only allows food trucks to be there during the time of service, is that correct, and not to be parked onsite?
I believe that's correct.
Okay. There is, as your conditions slide showed, one either dead food truck or food truck wannabe, I'm not sure which, parked on the site right now. It showed up in your one photo, and so I take it that would be cleared away.
So there is a food truck that has operated sort of separately from the food truck court, just a single food truck. I believe they have a business license to operate there, kind of independently from the rest of it. I don't know, I believe the owner's here this evening and could comment on whether or not that food truck will remain once the food truck court gets going.
Okay. It would appear to be on the Moose site, if I'm interpreting right the lines are. Okay, that's all I have for right now. Thank you.
Commissioner Koberwies?
Thank you, sir. So Katie, just clarity. We are here approving the conditional use permit for the Moose Lodge. Sounds like the food court portion of this has already been approved by staff?
That's correct.
That is correct. So the way the design of the food court, the layout, all of that stuff has all been handled already?
That's correct, yeah. And it's been approved as it's shown in your...
As it's shown, okay. In the report, it mentions a lot about deferred maintenance. Was there a building inspection done, do you know?
The building official has been on the site, and there are conditions of approval that would require certain things to be permitted, but most of the deferred maintenance that I'm referring to is more cosmetic to the outside of the building.
Yeah, I remember the building well. Wilson's Restaurant for, gosh, 30-plus years probably, if not longer.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm glad to see something's going to go in there finally, hopefully that's permanent in the long term. Okay, Commissioner Koberwies already addressed my sign question. Let me make sure there's nothing else. You know what, I'll pass it on to other questions until I finish reading my other stuff.
Commissioner Christensen?
Just a couple clarification questions, Katie. Building signage, we talked about the sign out by the street. Is there building signage, and is there certain lighting requirements for that, for that type of zone?
So the Moose has not proposed signage for themselves at this point. There is a condition that would require, at a point in time when they do want to put up signage, they would have to come for DRC review.
Okay. The commissary kitchen, that's not necessarily, are we approving that tonight? I mean, the concept of that space? I guess I'm a little confused on that part of it.
No, the conditions are included here because we want to make sure that the Moose can operate safely, and so we're allowing the Moose, and we're saying the Moose can operate here, but if somebody wants to go in this kitchen in the future, they've got to do these things to keep the Moose safe.
Okay, I mean, I like both, so. And when I was looking at the parking number diagram, so the Moose Lodge has, in their lease, access to all that parking that's left over from the food court, other than, say, five for the automotive repair?
Yes, and we do have an email, it's one of the attachments to your staff report, that, you know, when the auto-repair is not in use, or the spaces that the auto-repair doesn't use, they, you know, the Moose can use the spaces that are over there near the auto-repair.
Sure. Okay, I think that's the only questions I have at this moment.
Commissioner Conley?
Yeah, similar to Christiansen, Commissioner Christiansen, I was a little confused about the kitchen. Is the kitchen going to be used by both the food court and the Moose Lodge, so have dual usage?
No, there's actually two kitchens, and they're, one is, I don't know all the terminology, but it looks like it was maybe for more like short-order stuff, and then there was more of an involved kitchen towards the rear. And so the Moose will have their own kitchen. That was the picture we saw with the orange, the vibrant orange tiles. That's the kitchen that the Moose will use. There is a separate kitchen that needs to be more officially separated off, but it would be used as a commissary kitchen for food trucks and caterers.
So my concern is, would there be a conflict of use in that space? And I guess with two separate kitchens, as long as that, as long as everyone knows their boundaries, that there wouldn't be a conflict between the two?
So there is a requirement, a condition of approval that requires that the spaces be given proper separation to make sure there's no, like, fire spread and so forth. But as far as I'm understanding, the owner intends to lease them as two separately spaces, two separate tenant spaces. Yeah, and the conditions would require that that occurs in a safe manner.
Thank you.
Yeah, so with that separation of space, is that wall there fire-rated, or is there plans to make the separation between the kitchen spaces fire-rated?
So at this point in time, my understanding is it is not fire-rated. So the condition of approval is that before commissary kitchen can operate there, they, you know, we've, they're not going to be able to get health department clearance, building department, you know, there's, they need to work with the building department to determine what the appropriate separation is. And so our building department will help to, you know, make that, those requirements. I suspect it would require a fire-rated wall, but I don't know what else. The building official will ensure that the code requirements are enforced.
Sure, and then how much cooking is the Moose organization going to be doing in there? And what are you cooking, and how many people are you cooking for, and do you sell the food? Like, what's the, what's the plan for the kitchen?
I guess I should have prepared more for an opening statement. This is the first time I've ever been to a planning commission, so.
Me too.
I can just back up a little bit. We're a, we're a pri, got it. We're a private fraternity, and so to be, to get into the building, you have to have a card and swipe it, and then the door will buzz open. To leave, you just hit the bar, just like, you know, the bar at the door, and you can get out, just like any door. The kitchen is pretty limited in our use, because on Sundays, we do breakfast. So I'll say for sure, on Sundays, we do it. And then dinners are just kind of hit and miss. If somebody wants to volunteer to do a Friday night, Thursday night, or whatever, you know, like, we were doing Taco Tuesdays and hamburger Wednesdays or whatever. But it's just limited to the membership, and probably on an average night, we sell 20 meals, so 20 hamburgers, 20 tacos, something like that. So it's not a high volume, and everything is, all the stuff is countertop, they're all, we've bought brand-new stuff, and so separating that kitchen and our kitchen is night and day.
Yeah, yeah. And it's volunteers that cook?
Yes.
Okay, great. And then with the signage, the site signage, I guess this would be for staff, is it currently lit, and are there requirements for lighting out on a sign, out like that?
My understanding is that it is not currently lit, although there is, it looks like some sort of conduit that goes up the middle, so it's possible there's electricity out there. Signs are not required to be lit, but there are, you can light them. The specific plan prefers external illumination, like a bulb shining on the sign, instead of like a, like a can sign or something like that. So this, what you're seeing here is just the, I don't even know what to call it. It's like the remnants, like, almost like the dirt that was behind the sign. It's not, this, I'm not even sure that that's paint. It might be, but that's leftover from Paradise Grill, and I think even from Wilson's.
Understood. And then with the irrigation upgrade, or the landscaping upgrade, are there irrigation upgrades going to be going with that? Do you guys plan on doing excavation and trenching through the site to accommodate an upgraded irrigation system?
So I was informed that there is irrigation, or, you know, lines leading to these planters, and so yes, the applicant will need to install, you know, emitters and more irrigation equipment, but I don't believe it's going to require trenching.
Okay. And then does your organization, do you guys do outdoor activities? Are you planning on being outside? Obviously, it sounds like a lot of people are leaving way early in the evening, so I'm just...
The three years I've been administrator, we haven't done anything outside, but in past years, I've heard they've had a few things where we, you know, get a one-day permit, but I don't know all the ins and outs in that. But right now, there's no plans. I'm just trying to get in there and start making some money so I can pay that guy back there, so.
Yeah. I just got two more. If the sign is removed because it is abandoned, what's the requirement for them to put it back in, or?
So my understanding is the owner would like to use that to advertise the food truck court, just for information. It wouldn't be used for the Moose. But if they wanted to, to, yeah, to put in the sign, they would need to first get approval from the Development Review Committee, which is, of course, a subcommittee of the Planning Commission, and then they would need a building permit for that.
Yeah, and, but if it got abandoned, they would just have to go through that again?
Right, they would need to remove this sign, and then they could start over with a more compliant sign.
Great, and the only last one is, how long were you guys in the last location?
What was the question?
How long were you in the last location?
In 1980, they were right across the street, then shortly thereafter, they moved over, so '81, '82.
Cool.
And on signs, I told Katie, we really don't plan on a sign right now, because we're not really advertising for the public to come in, and anybody that gets on the Moose site, they can see where the address is, and then they show up.
Yeah, great, thank you. That's all I had.
Any additional questions? With that, this is a public comment. I will open it up for a public comment. Is there anybody that would like to speak to this item? Marcy, anybody online?
No callers.
Seeing that, I will close public comment and bring it back to the commission for further discussion and/or a motion. Commissioner Koberwies?
On the discussion front, I guess, I was on the DRC when this was reviewed, and I do support the use of this site. I think it makes a lot of sense. There were a number of details that we talked about at DRC, many of which are addressed tonight or have been addressed tonight. I think I'm satisfied with those descriptions and explanations of how the business will be run. So I think it works, and I certainly support bringing the sign into compliance.
Commissioner Koberwies?
No, I'll echo that. I think that...
No, I'll echo that. I think that, again, that building's been there forever, and it needs a lot of TLC to get it, to get it more respectable and looking good. And I'm happy to hear that somebody's gonna occupy it and take care of it. A little surprised, and I get the theory why you're not gonna put a sign on there. I get it. It's not intended for public use. It's more of a membership-based use. I've been in the Moose Lodge a couple times as a guest. Just, and so I'm just happy to hear that this building's finally gonna be used for something, I, hopefully, long-term. So I would be in complete support.
Commissioner Christiansen?
Yeah, I would echo the comments of the other commissioners. I'm also happy about the commissary kitchen. I think that there is a large use for that in our town. So I think that you'll, that will be a benefit to have that ability. And I, I'm glad that the Moose Lodge has found a new home. So, thank you.
Commissioner Conley?
Yeah, I think there's a good use. I would support it. With regard to the sign, it seems to me that the Moose Lodge isn't interested in the sign. If it becomes abandoned, then it seems like the food court is, or the food trucks would be the interested party. And it would be them that would come forward with a sign proposal at a future date. So I would support this.
Commissioner Marlowe?
Yep, I support this. Be nice, get someone in there.
So with all that support, is there a motion this evening?
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion. I would make move that Planning Commission approved conditional use permit twenty-two dash twenty permitting private meeting facility, six thirty-five twenty-eighth street, with the additions of conditions fifteen and sixteen that were outlined by staff.
I have a motion, is there-
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Cogler and a second by Commissioner Christiansen. Any further comment? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Cogler?
Aye.
Commissioner Christiansen?
Aye.
Commissioner Conley?
Aye.
Commissioner Marlowe?
Aye.
Commissioner Coverubias?
Aye.
Chairperson Neal?
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
And for the next item, I work for the general contractor that is working with the Hope Family Wines to build this project, so I will have to step down from this project and put to work our newly minted vice chair. So don't forget to come get me, Tom.
Why, thank you so much. Okay, well, I guess we'll, we'll hear the presentation from staff.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, this is the Triana Winery Expansion Project. It's at forty-two eighty Second Wind Way. So this is out on Dry Creek Road, off of Dry Creek Road. So this would be east of Airport Road at Dry Creek Road and north side of Dry Creek. Second Wind Way is a street off of that, looking at the location map on the screen. So this is Second Wind Way. It's kind of the entrance to this existing facility here. And what we're talking about tonight is an expansion of the Triana Winery Project, which would then go out into this area here. So that's kind of the project site area that we're looking at this evening. So this is a tract map that kind of reoriented and subdivided a few additional parcels out that the city was involved with at the airport. These are airport lease sites. So Triana Winery leases, has a long-term lease with the, with the airport, with the city through the airport of these properties. So they've expanded their lease to get additional properties to accommodate this expansion area. In this photo here, you can kind of see where this says Suris Lane. This was the previous alignment of a paper street, not built. With the, the new tract map, that portion was abandoned. And then wing, or right way is what is the new street with the cul-de-sac that will be constructed by the city. I believe that that is happening fairly soon where the construction of that road would happen. So this property would be along Dry Creek Road and along right way. And then this is the site plan. Here's the existing facility. There's some existing tanks here, but then this new facility happens on these gray and dark area buildings. This is more of a specific site plan for the expansion area. So this building here on the right is the Case Goods Building and some administration area. The building in the center here is where the bottling, I'm sorry, the barrel storage as well as additional barrel storage. And I believe there's a bottling component in this area here. This is a landscape plan for the project. The photo above kind of shows the existing landscaping that's been done along Dry Creek Road. The intent is that that landscaping palette would continue across Dry Creek Road and then turn up in the, along right way here, and then provide the landscape setback along with the parking lot trees. I believe that at the, at the DRC meeting, Mr. Hope indicated that they were doing some work to that existing landscape area and had some other ideas for what was happening. So maybe we can have him explain and provide us of what they've been working on and what, if there's any changes proposed from this plan here. There's another picture of that area. Conditions of approval has been added to make sure that the landscape comes all the way down and is planted all the way down to the edge of the curb along here. So that's a condition of approval that was added. The other condition related to landscaping that was added was to a landscape across the back. The zoning ordinance requires frontage landscaping along streets, but also a minimum of three feet landscape along the interior edges. So that's proposed as well. This, we've been, the planning department's been working with, with the Hope Family quite some time on this project. Early on, there were some discussions on some much taller buildings. This, this area of the city is in the airport zone. We don't have specific development standards in the airport zone that say, here's the max height, or here's the specific requirement for setbacks, or those kind of things. We typically use, whether it's the C-three zone or the planned industrial zone, as a, you know, kind of a feeler gauge for the, the standards that we would do in the airport zone. What we worked with the applicants on was coming up with a fifty-eight-foot ridge height. So the maximum height is fifty-eight feet. As it comes down to the edges, it's, it's shorter than that. Fifty feet is the max height in the planned industrial zone, the PM zone, which is the Westeria and Germain, those types of streets. Or in the C-three zone is fifty foot is the max. Fifty-eight feet here is being proposed. It seems reasonable for this area. And it, as I mentioned, the airport zone would allow up to fifty-eight feet here. Here's some exterior elevations. Again, staff work to get, with the applicants, with the Poults and associates, to, to come up with these elevations. I think some of the colors, some of the windows are even added since it was at DRC the last time. But in, but in general, coming up with these improvements to these facade areas helped out, and staff is able to, to recommend and support those elevations on these proposed buildings. Colors and materials, the core tan, the metal is what's being proposed. The paint colors are shown here. I think the applicant, along with the architect, can kind of get into that a little more on, on their discussion. Here's some perspective views, just kind of showing that, that interior, that interior travelway there, the circulation around the site. And these are looking, if you're standing in Dry Creek Road, kind of looking toward the east for the project, for this picture on the left. And then if you were standing on the east side of the project, looking back towards the west, this is that west corner there, or the east corner there. This did require a mitigated negative declaration that was circulated for this project. We did receive three letters from agencies as part of that circulation of the mitigated negative declaration. One letter was from the Slow County Air Pollution Control District. This project had an air quality study, and there were some questions related to that study and some of the information within there. When I got the Air Pollution Control District letter, I provided it to the Triana Air Quality Consultant, who was able to answer the questions by the Air Pollution Control District. We sent that letter back to them. There was no proposal for any additional or changes to any of the mitigation measures. We received a, the second letter we received was from the Department of Conservation. This was more of just a report that they checked the site for any abandoned oil or gas wells. That's what they look for. And the letter indicated that there was none found in the project area. But that's the letter we received. There was no additional information required as a result of that letter. And then about ten minutes prior to the meeting, we received the letter from Caltrans. And if you recall, we did quite a bit of work on the Stravinsky and Dow project and the traffic study that was done there. And along with, you know, this project was being reviewed at the same time. So all those impacts on Airport Road, on Dry Creek, all of those were looked at with both that Stravinsky Dow project, but also this project. So we were able to narrow down and work with Caltrans on the mitigation measures for the Stravinsky Dow project, which we were then able to apply to this project. So that Airport Road and the, the right turns only and cutting off the left turns going eastbound on Highway forty-six from Airport Road is the same mitigation that was required for this project. And the Caltrans letter just verified that they had no other proposals for changes or any different concerns with this project. So before you this evening is, is the options. The first option is to approve the mitigated negative declaration, to approve the development plan, allowing the expansion of the project. Or option two could be recommend approval of the project with some modifications that the Planning Commission may come up with. Or three is to refer the project back to staff for additional analysis. Or four is to not, deny the project, giving specific findings on reasons for denial. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, let's start with Commissioner Marlowe. Do you have any questions for staff? Or the, well, you know what? Let's do this. Does the applicant want to come up and talk first? Maybe that's probably the better thing to do. Apologize, Commissioner Marlowe. Come on up and, and give us your comments. Can you announce who you are?
Yes.
Thank you.
So I'm Austin Hope, president of Hope Family Wines. And as we're speaking about Triana, first off, I want to thank the city staff. They've been very helpful in helping us navigate the waters. This is obviously a large, large project, large addition. And they have been supporters of us and have helped us navigate the water. It was very, very appreciative. And I appreciate the commission as well, because there's been, obviously, this has been back and forth a few different times, and everybody's kind of got a piece of it and helped steer us in the right direction and what's possible, what's not possible. So anyways, first off, it's pretty wild. This is, my family's been here since nineteen seventy-eight. And, you know, we, we never dreamed that we'd have success and have so many families working with us and growing and see this community thrive like it is. It's just, it's a blessing for everybody, quite honestly. And we're thrilled about it. So the main, the main reason for this is, you know, we've been, we've been a tenant of the cities for twenty-seven years out there, and it added on as we've gone along. And this one really is to bring back everything that we've, we've accomplished and that I've done over the years back to Paso. We've grown and, you know, we haven't had money to do things. We've had to outsource and over the years. And this one really is just to bring everything back home. So currently, we ship a lot of wine out of the area that goes to another facility up north. And it's bottled up there, shipped from there. So this is really, we're, we're very serious about our quality of how we do things. And it's bothered us for the years of being able to ship things off. And we're finally to a point where we're ready to take the reach and, and, and go for this, this size to be able to bring everything home. So that's, that's the big thing is for us, is bring everything home. With that said, that it's a positive, not only for us, for our community, but for, for infrastructure. We, we, you know, send a tremendous amount of trucks that wear and tear on the highways and traffic and all that. So this keeps it all at one spot. So we can bottle all our wine there. We can distribute from there rather than having to go up and back, up and back and multiple times. So it's really, it's a, I think it's a win-win for everybody, honestly. And I think it's gonna help, help with traffic too, within that particular area. And, you know, being pushed into having to put what they call a pork chop, which I never knew what the heck a pork chop was until, until I learned it's a can't turn left. So that was, that was a new word for me. But I'm actually very pleased with that because it is very dangerous, that left-hand turn lane. So I think it's a positive thing that Caltrans and the city have worked on to bring that back to us. And I'm more than happy to, to get that going in the works. You know, outside of that, I think it's, I'll leave it to you guys, but, you know, I think it's, we're in a wonderful place. Paso's grown and it's, you know, we're a fairly good-sized company that employs people all over the country and the world. We're in thirty, thirty countries now and spreading the Paso message. And so it's just, it's exciting to be part of the community. And we love this area. And, you know, we've been here our whole lives and want to continue to grow it in the right way and call this home. So welcome any questions. And I've got J.C., which is our director of winemaking with us. If you've got questions in regards to any of those types of things. And then we've got Andres from Poulson Associate, which is doing our architect. And so with that, we'll open it back to you guys. Oh, landscape, I'm sorry. I will touch on landscape. Some people know me, some people don't, but I'm a landscape freak. So we've, since that last photo you've seen, I've already put in like a hundred and forty-five different trees, more trees that you'll, you'll see once we start, spring gets going. And so you can rest assured, you don't have to worry about landscape. I'm goofy about landscape. I overdo landscape. So that's, and we are the, where Darren pointed out, but we'd already talked about bringing it down to the road. That's in the works. We're ordering all the plants. We finally picked those out. So those will come right down, probably like three foot off the, off the road, whatever the minimum is there. And we just got another shipment of trees the other day. So it's gonna be, it'll be pretty, it'll be overdone, way past the expectations of what you might ask. And yeah, did I miss anything else? Anything there? Oh, and the existing buildings, you did see, you saw our new renderings with the different architectural design. So we're, we're gonna bring that all the way around. So if you go back a couple slides, do they have a picture of the existing on there? I can't remember if you did. I don't think you did either. But if you've been out there before, they're just, they're, they're steel buildings. There's, there's nothing other than the landscape around it. So we're gonna take these type of same things and put it to the existing building so it ties together and kind of beautifies the whole, the whole neighborhood, if you will. So maybe that's just kind of the things we do. I mean, I'm visually, architecturally, I love those types of things. So we want, we're proud of this place and we're proud of where we live and proud of where we, we make wine. So we wanna, we want it to look well.
All right. Thank you. Okay, let's go to questions from commissioners. Commissioner Marlowe?
Yeah, I just, just a couple. I'm being an aviator. The airport community is really important to me. And, and I like to see that fact that you're gonna bring up, you know, something like this. I guess my question is, with the museum down the road and the estimated, you know, three hundred and eighty new vehicle trips, like, is there a consider, I mean, obviously Caltrans did a study, but do we feel that there's gonna be an impact to the museum down there? Or, I mean, it might be an impact in a good way. I just, without getting too far into it, has that been looked at for, for the traffic for the museum down there? into it, has that been looked at for, for the traffic for the museum down there?
I'll let J.C. answer that. So yeah, we have been talking with them on the traffic study. And a lot of it, that was kind of posted on what they felt was the, the traffic. So a lot of this is, as Austin alluded to before, we talked about the vehicles in and out. So right now, we're larger than what we are there. So we have to send wine out to store, bring it back for process, send it out again for bottling. So what we're going to do now is we'll bring in the grapes. Everything stays there for a year and a half, two years prior to it being finished and shipped out. So we're eliminating basically three of the truck trips to, to do the one truck at the end.
Okay.
And so, and a lot of our staffing, so this helps us put in a lot more. And as you see the height of the buildings, there's a reason for that. We're bringing in safety to put in a racking system. So it's earthquake safety. It's, it's safety for our personnel. And it also brings in that we don't have to have so many people there to move all the barrels. So we're bringing in automation to help stack them. It works with the case goods as well. So it'll be in the case system that will stack there to bring more automation. So right now, we have roughly 41 employees there. When we're finished, it'll be around 39. So a lot of that, it's, it's going to be using this different equipment. So in terms of the area, we should have less vehicle traffic than a lot of those things. As the size grows, it's going to be, you know, you're going to have more because of more case goods, but it's going to be a minimal amount in the difference. So we don't foresee any impact in terms of them. We do not do tastings or wine sales out of the site.
Tours? Are you going to be doing tours down there?
Tours would be a minimum. So if a distributor that comes to town, but it wouldn't be anything that you'd see. It'd be maybe one or two a month at the most, but it's not public tours. So it's only a private industry.
Yeah. And the only other question I have is when do you guys plan on breaking ground? What's the anticipated duration of the project?
So the phase one portion would be breaking ground by hopefully,
Next week?
Hopefully by mid-April. And anticipation would be 300 to 400 days.
Okay. And it's, so it's phased? And what phase two would be the renovations of the existing buildings or?
No, that would be starting now.
Oh, okay.
Phase one would be the case room and the covering on the existing take pad.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Commissioner Conley, questions for staff or the applicant?
Yeah, thank you. In regard to the mitigation measures, there is a mention about their set forth in the mitigation monitoring and reporting plan. Is that included in this package, mitigation measures for?
I'm sorry, I didn't really hear what your question was.
Well, the draft resolution speaks of mitigation measures. And just wanted to know, it says they're imposed on the project through the adoption of a mitigation monitoring and reporting plan. So.
Yes, that's part of that Resolution A for the mitigated negative declaration. The mitigation and monitoring plan is attached to that Resolution A.
And so that's in here with regard to traffic impacts, water impacts?
And then secondarily, all of those mitigation measures are also then put in the conditions of approval. So they're twice, they're in both resolutions.
So I assume that, that's part of the overall project to bring Airport Road, overcrossing in and all of, all of the master plans for circulation area, element of this area?
Correct. So the, the traffic consultant, Central Coast Traffic Consultants, Joe Fernandez and his company are, is the only traffic consultant the city has. But they've looked a lot in this airport area, in this Highway 46 east corridor on ways regionally and for this part of the city to look at different ways to, to help with the traffic. Because we know that Highway 46 and trying to get intersections and things there are not the best.
So I don't know if there's enough impact here for them to contribute to, towards that. That was kind of my question with the increase in size and maybe increase in vehicle traffic.
So they're, they're going to be responsible for the, the right turn along with some of the other projects, but they'll also pay traffic impact fees that will ultimately, that will ultimately work towards future bigger projects.
That's good. That pretty much answers my question there. But just out of curiosity, how many jobs will this, will this bring to the community?
We're, we're growing all the time. I mean, it's, we hired two people yesterday. It's, it continues. I mean, I can't give you a real number, but we're, we're not, we're not shy on hiring people.
So this is, this is a good thing if it brings employment within the city.
Yes, yes. No, we're, we're not, we're not looking to be less, less employees. We're looking to grow the community.
Is there a, is the access at, or is there access at Jardine Road for this project? I know it's kind of equal distance between Airport, Jardine. Do you see any operations using the Jardine entrance?
Jardine entrance? No, potentially going, leaving to get 46.
Yeah.
But I don't see them using Jardine, no.
Okay.
I mean, the only thing that would be on Jardine would be if there's a vineyard out there that brings in grapes. But no, I don't see any additional.
And I've noticed there's a drainage, drainage impact, and there's some expanding of some retention basins as a result of the drainage proposal. Is there going to be landscaping within that, those basins or just?
We certainly could put some trees around it, but it's, it's definitely, it's on the interior side. So it's not exposed to anything. It's, would be on the, you know, the airport taxiways, that side. So it wasn't brought up. But again, I love landscapes. I mean,
Yeah. Well, yeah, to the extent that it still functions. Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Kogler?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions for David Athie, City Engineer. I know he was eager to get up there a minute ago. First of those being the TDMP plan, is that approved by staff?
The travel demand, yes, David Athie, City Engineer. The travel demand management plan is approved by staff. It has to meet the conditions that are in the, for the project, which are the hours of operation and using Airport Road, you know, are two of the different conditions.
Right. And that was what kind of prompted the question, that it is, that the edict is you use Airport Road. How does that TD, I used to call them TMPs, TDMP get translated downstream to the truck drivers and everybody else so that they know what the rules of the game are?
That's a great question. I think I'll let the applicant answer that and how they interact with their drivers and contractors.
So are shippings by appointment only? And so I think that's part of the question is, is when we're shipping out and the time of use. But all our shipping's by appointment. So that's where we talked about minimizing those during those times of use. Also, majority of all of our shipment goes north. So a lot of it doesn't even go down the highway. It'll go directly north on Airport Road and go back to 101 through the San Miguel area.
Good. Thank you. David?
The, there's discussion in the traffic report about the extension of the acceleration lane. And there are some numbers in there, 625 feet, I think, was recommended, or is the existing perhaps for the Airport Road intersection with 46. There's commentary about expanding that between 960 to 1200 feet, depending on the desired speed to get the trucks to integrate in with traffic. There's reference in here to extension of that, but it doesn't peg that to a number. How long will that extension that's going to be added be when it's complete?
So that, that actually, bad idea for that potential mitigation is not favored by Caltrans. And the most recent letter with Stravinsky-Dow and now with Triana, their preferred alternative is the Werewearo Bridge for getting folks to Golden Hill Road. In the interim, they had preferred that the left out, so the southbound left to eastbound 46 be closed and that traffic be sent to Golden Hill Road. Passenger type vehicles, so pickup trucks and cars would do a U-turn at Golden Hill, which is currently allowed. Larger vehicles would go up through the city to the Golden Hill Roundabout and either down Union Road or back to Golden Hill. That's the interim condition until the Werewearo Bridge is built. You know, we, the, the, the conditions are set up so that that traffic itself won't be on either city surface streets or Highway 46 at peak hours. So that traffic won't be interfering with local city traffic, in which is also part of the TDMP, why it's important that these things all be tied together. So the, the left, the acceleration lane has been abandoned. That, that solution is not favored by Caltrans. And so what, what we've conditioned the project to do is comply with what the recommendations are from Caltrans.
Okay.
Which is part of, which is number two in the three different options, which is, you know, do a U-turn on 46.
And refresh my memory, when will we attend the ribbon cutting for the Werewearo Bridge?
I, I hope as soon as possible. It's currently under design and has gone through environmental review. So that project is moving forward. And we anticipate with the landing and the other projects and the, and the, we talked about the, the, the traffic impact fee. Sorry, I was having a senior moment there. The traffic impact fees paid, we're currently putting the funds together to build that bridge.
So a few years, maybe?
Yes, anticipated a few years.
Okay.
25, 26, I think, is the target right now.
Okay. All right. And then finally, there's, again, the traffic report, and this may have been another element that's, that's not going to be ultimately a recommendation. But there's discussion of the bike usage on Dry Creek Road and the potential to, I don't have the languages exactly, some additional width or something. Is there any change to accommodate bikes, either as a part of this or in the future on Dry Creek?
Not with this project. Possibly in the future. Right now, Dry Creek Road is seen as a Class 3 bikeway, which is, you know, basically signed but not striped. And there are no plans to increase the width of Dry Creek at this time.
I think I was reacting to a reference that the city's arterial standards are actually for bike Class 2, even though other plans say Class 3.
The arterial standards do have that. The city made, the city council made a decision to build Dry Creek in its current configuration.
Okay. Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you, Andrew.
All right. Commissioner Corubius?
Don't go too far, David. I do have a question for Austin, but I'll ask you first, David. So Commissioner Kogler nailed it when he asked about the Werewearo Bridge. It's 25, 26-ish. We have other projects out on Airport Road that are future developments. Some may even get approved prior to that. I'm thinking summer months, ravine water park packed. You got now this winery, you've got Stravinsky-Dow. I mean, the plan that Caltrans come up with is obviously make that right. We talked about this during Stravinsky. How are we going to monitor and keep those trucks from making U-turns and, and not trying to make a left when they're geared to make a right? I mean, it's impossible to monitor that. Yes. I mean, what's going to prevent these guys? I mean, is that whole intersection going to be redone, re-revised, other than just a, a speed up lane?
I just so I'm clear, you're referring to Airport, 46?
Yes.
So as someone mentioned earlier, the construction of it's a raised median island, but it's called a pork chop. It's kind of the art, term of art. So that will be in place. There's actually one similar to it. You can look at right now at Sensorio. So they have, they, Caltrans did not allow them to have a left turn out at Sensorio heading towards Fresno. So that median is in place right now. It's raised, about six inch curb. It forces traffic to go right. You could, I mean, you could go around that pork chop and you could get a ticket for that. Because the right turns are prohibited at that, or excuse me, the left turns are prohibited at that intersection. So the physical improvement itself, raised median island, channelizes folks to turn right. Could they go around that and turn left? Yes. But typically, we don't have a problem with compliance in that case. The odd, the odd case, you know, could turn left there. But it is more difficult than, than just, you know, it's not a straight, it won't be a straight shot anymore and still have that like wave wide open lane.
Yeah. And I get the. My concern is, we're building that roundabout for a purpose of helping, helping flow of traffic. And when we start diverting everybody that way, I mean, I, it's almost counterproductive is what's going to occur, at least until 25, 26, if we're lucky.
Right.
Right? So that's kind of a little bit of the concern is what are we doing there? And then you add in Barney Schwartz Park, and the vehicle's coming from that direction. It's just, to me, it's concerning.
I, I hear what you're saying. I, I think that, so there are time of day, like for all these projects, Stravinsky-Dow and now Triana, they have time of day restrictions on the busy, like Monday through Friday, Monday through Thursday and Friday and, and the peak hour on Sunday. They have time of day restrictions for travel, those will coincide with the busy hours on city surface streets. That's only for the larger vehicles, like trucks, like full-size cargo type trucks or semis. Those vehicles will be the ones using the roundabout at the times that don't coincide. Or could, you know, rarely, you know, you have a, you have a tournament at Barney Schwartz and all the soccer folks are leaving, you know, at, at one time. Those kind of clogs are going to happen no matter what we do. You know, whether Triana's trucks are there or Stravinsky-Dow's trucks are there, you're going to just have, you're going to have a short-term impact at that intersection. So that's why we set it up, time of day restrictions to, one, not interfere with the operations of Caltrans facility. And then the short-term, not interfere with the city's roundabout operations. Most of the pickup trucks, most of the tra, the traffic will be passenger vehicles, pickup trucks and cars. Those can still do a U-turn at Golden Hill Road. They don't need to go into the, into the city to do a left, to do the U-turn.
Right.
So we're only talking about the, the larger vehicles.
Okay. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you, David. Mr. Hope, I have a question.
Sure.
Just curious, and this may be, be a learning thing, maybe even staff, are solar panels restricted out in that area because of the airport, Darren?
No.
They're not? So just curious.
Yes.
There aren't, there aren't any solar panels proposed in this project?
Yes.
Is that right?
Well, we were putting, we're putting in applications for it.
Oh, you are?
Yes.
Okay. I was looking for that and I, and I must have missed it then. So there are sort of solar panels out there being proposed?
Our company, Bahamas Solar, which has done a couple of projects for me in the valley, is, is going to submit this week. Because as everybody knows too, they're, you know, they're changing all the things to, which, in any sense, that's a whole nother rant. We could go on. But yes, so there would be solar.
Okay, perfect, perfect. Well, I was on DRC, so I appreciate all the changes you've made.
Thank you.
Since DRC. So, yeah, that's it.
Okay.
Mr. Gibson?
I glossed over.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Kogler.
Mr. Hope, are the, is the existing building essentially ash gray, which is one of the colors in your new palette?
They're, they're very similar.
Okay, so that'll blend.
And as, as, as you probably know, they change all the time. And so it's hard to pinpoint everything exactly, but there's not going to be major drastic differences.
Okay. Your computer illustrations are really helpful, but it had like a muted back leaf pattern over a lot of that. And I couldn't tell if it was a light gray or dark gray, but it all blends together.
Yeah, I, I feel it does.
Okay. And then my other point would be, it's not really a question so much as a request for staff. This review is in the same circumstances as one we had a couple of meetings ago, in that the comment period runs through today. And that clock kind of keeps going because any comments that are postmarked today or prior to that would still be valid a day or two or three from now. And I would just ask staff, as, as we go through other aspects of this, just make sure the rest of the resolution language reflects that, as we did on that previous case. That the door isn't really closed to comments, but based on the information we know as of tonight, we will act on things. Is that?
And one thing to understand, though, is previous projects may have been recommendations to council. So the period went beyond tonight.
Good point.
So that was a difference on Stravinsky-Dow. This project has been noticed so that the environmental document ends tonight.
So regardless of a comment is postmarked by noon today, that comment is not found valid?
We would have gotten them and they would have been, like the three letters, we provided those to you. those to you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other commissioners, follow-up questions? Okay, well, um, hand it to my other commissioners, they asked and got answered several of the questions already had. Um, David, I had one follow-up question, uh, for you in regards to Union and 46. Are you planning on putting the pork chop in that situation, too? Because, I tell you what, people pulling out left from 46, trying to head back towards town, it's just a nightmare.
Where Union comes into 46 facing east, right there.
Right. Um, so right now, there's two projects that are conditioned to close that left out. One is the hotel on the, uh, would be the south, kind of west corner, um, of that kind of Y-intersection.
Uh-huh.
Uh, and the other is the water park. Neither project has moved forward with their, with their plans. Uh, the hotel is, is a little further ahead than the water park, um, but, uh, I believe it's prior to final of the hotel that they would have to close that left out, um, and put in new signage directing people where to go if they want to, uh, go back towards town.
Okay, I think I remember that now, thank you, appreciate it. Um, I think that's it for my questions, so, um, if, if the other commissioners don't have any other questions of staff or the applicant, then we'll move to public comment. Is there anyone that would like to comment? If not, do we have anybody on the phone?
No callers.
Okay. Uh, moving on to commissioner discussion, so I will start off with Commissioner Marlowe again. Do you have some items you want to discuss?
I, no, no comment, yeah.
Commissioner Conley?
I don't have any further. Thank you.
Commissioner Kogler?
Um, I was on DRC and was on the phone call with some of the faces that I can now put names with, um, and I think this is a great project. I think you've done a phenomenal job on the building, and, and you profess to be gung-ho on landscaping, and it's evident with what's out there. As you drive past your existing facility, it stands out today, and I can't wait to see what your new facility does to tie into that, so I fully support the project.
Commissioner Kovarubius?
Yep, I was also on DRC, as mentioned, and, uh, I a hundred percent support the project. I think you guys have done a great job, it's gonna be a beautiful facility. Um, just, I think it's gonna be great, in fact, uh, I'm prepared to make a motion if we're ready for that.
I just wanted to comment that, um, I would echo your, uh, your thoughts. It was a little unfair, the photo of your landscaping, but I have been out there when it's really nice, and I do appreciate that you take such value in it, because, um, ordinarily, that stretch, growing up here in Paso, has never been the most beautiful location, even though I love to fly as well, too. Uh, so, yes, if there is a motion, I believe, on the table, Mr.?
Yes, sir, I'd like to make a motion that we approve draft Resolution A to adopt the proposed mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting plan and Item B, Draft Resolution B, to approve Plan Development 22-03, along with the added conditions for landscaping.
Okay, do we have a second on that?
I will second, and I will ask, I guess, does that have to be one motion or two?
Keep, the, to, making a motion to cover both resolutions is fine in this case.
Then a double second, it is.
Okay, seconded by Commissioner Kogler. Um, roll call? What are we having discussion on that? Anybody? No? Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Kovarubius?
Aye.
Commissioner Kogler?
Aye.
Commissioner Marlowe?
Aye.
Commissioner Conley?
Aye.
Chair, Vice Chair Christensen?
Aye.
So the record will reflect that the motion passed five-zero with Neil abstaining for a conflict, and we should invite, uh, Chairperson Neil back in.
Yep. Katie DeJordi, okay, thank you so much. And at this time, I'll hand it back over to Chairperson Neil.
Thank you very much, um, glad to be back. Uh, the next, um, agenda item is, uh, Olson South Chandler specific plan, Planning Area 13, vesting tentative track map twenty-three-two thirteen and Plan Development 22-16, P-22-0103, applicant is SG Capital Partners. Staff?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, this is the, what's known as PA-13. So this is Planning Area 13 of the uptown, uh, uptown, the Olson South Chandler specific plan, also, uh, called Vigneto. So this is, these are exhibits out of the specific plan. Uh, the vicinity map there is showing all those different colors is the entire Olson South Chandler specific plan. You can see the numbers in those, those areas represent the planning area numbers. The, the, uh, table on the right-hand side indicates the different planning areas and the number of units, as well as the type of residential, uh, that was approved with the specific plan. So this evening, we are looking at this area, Planning Area 13. So just to give you a little bit of idea of where we are, so, uh, looking up here, this is Sherwood Road, uh, as it comes down, typically, we then turn right on Fontana, and then we would hit Lanay, and then we would come down to Airport. So this jog, you're all familiar with, I may have mixed up a few names there, uh, but the whole idea is that Sherwood Road will be extended along, uh, here with the Olson South Chandler specific plan, and it'll come down and then hit in with Metalark Road down here. So this area is, is a alignment of the existing Lanay Road, uh, and this is Planning Area 13, and this is Hanson Road. Uh, and then Hanson Road is the current city boundaries between the county and the city limits. So looking up here at Planning Area 13, this was an area intended for motor, motor court type development. Uh, there's a hundred and twenty-nine lots that were, or a hundred and twenty-nine residential units approved for, uh, Planning Area 13. This is out of the specific plan as well. This is showing the hundred and twenty-nine units in these clusters of six, uh, residential units. Each of these units are on a spec, on a separate parcel, so, uh, there's a subdivision map that goes along with this, the small lot subdivision map that was approved with, uh, the Olson South Chandler specific plan, uh, also approved these hundred and twenty-nine lots, and then these other amenity lots as well. So this is, again, the specific plan and how those six courtyard units were laid out, uh, and then the T-driveway coming in, into the garages, uh, so that's the courtyard design approved with the specific plan. So this is a slide that starts to get into what's being proposed tonight with STG. And this is a, STG is proposing a hundred and seven lots, so a hundred and seven primary units, so they'd be reducing it from a hundred and twenty-nine lots down to one hundred and seven. So one of the things we're looking for the planning commission to do tonight is to approve that new tentative subdivision map, uh, with the, uh, a hundred and seven primary lots. Uh, they are asking for a few setback reductions, uh, but the reason for that is with the hundred and seven lots, this project is proposing one accessory dwelling unit with each lot be attached to that primary unit. So this STG plan is a primary unit with a accessory dwelling unit with each unit, so, uh, that is, also, the hundred and seven lots, there's a reduction in the number of the primary units in these units, so it goes from six down to, six, uh, primary units down to five, uh, and then that accommodates those accessory dwelling units. Uh, there, we're gonna talk a little bit about the architectural style, and then there's some added amenities with this project, with the clubhouse and with the fitness buildings. Uh, the architect, uh, Daniel Gammon is here tonight, and he's gonna make a presentation, so I'm not gonna get real deep into the site planning and architectural. In terms of the accessory dwelling units, just wanted to provide a breakdown, because one of the things, if you looked at the project description from the, uh, from the applicant, was they requested a modification to, uh, reduce the amount of open space allowed for the accessory dwelling units. So this is just a little bit of information on accessory dwelling units. State law for accessory dwelling units, as well as the city's ordinance, uh, it, it does not require, uh, open space for accessory dwelling units when they're eight hundred or less square feet. So the city does not have the ability to require, uh, open space for accessory dwelling units, uh, when they're eight hundred or less square feet. There's other things, too, but the open space is what this project is requesting, uh, some relief from. The number of ADUs that they're proposing is a hundred and seven, if you look at the breakdown. The Plan 1 ADU is less than eight hundred square feet, it's six hundred and sixty-three. The Plan 2 square footage is six hundred and forty-three square feet, and then the ADU for the Plan 3 is slightly over the eight hundred square feet, but come to find out that the, the, actually, if we look at the design for the ADU for the eight hundred and forty-seven square feet, the twenty-one situations where that happens, the open space, the private open space is actually provided for on those. So, uh, we can talk about this a little bit more after the presentation from the architect. The whole idea, um, and we'll get to, let me get to the STG plan here. Yep, relying on Daniel to provide that. So the whole idea is that their project with the, the open space is provided for common areas, with the amenities, with the clubhouse, with the fitness center, that that common open space would provide for, uh, the open space for, whether it's the primary units or the accessory dwelling units. The primary units have the private, uh, open space, uh, but just in general, uh, the intent of this whole area and with the specific plans, with the Turtle Creek Park, with all of the trails, there's a lot of open space provided for in the specific plan area that is beyond what would be, uh, provided for on each of the individual units. This is a, a specific plan, so this is, this is out of the specific plan, so there was a wine country element, there was a progressive Spanish, and there was a modern farmhouse element. What you're gonna see in the presentation is the request for the, all of the units to, just to maintain this modern farmhouse architectural style throughout. Uh, there's different color palettes, there's different models, so they don't all look the same, but, uh, there's a section in the specific plan that indicates that the planning areas should have the three different types, or, uh, the three different types of architectural. They're proposing to stick with the modern farmhouse, and, uh, the architect will be able to walk you through the designs on that. This is the development standards, the setbacks, the height, um, the, uh, the landscape, the parking. This is that courtyard design. This project, as I mentioned, will have five primary units instead of six. It opens up a little more, but the main reason is that they're adding those ADU units. Uh, the architect will go through this and, and indicate kind of the areas and get more into, uh, the request for the setback reductions, uh, generally along Lanay Road. Uh, this is indicating a ten-foot rear yard setback. They're proposing, uh, just under nine, eight, eight feet and some, uh, and some inches for some reductions from the ten down to eight, but they'll be able to, he'll be able to provide that in his, uh, presentation. This is out of the specific plan, just indicating the farmhouse style and different, uh, materials. This is out of the specific plan, showing the plan, the, the cross-section for Lanay Road, the two lanes, the bike lanes, uh, drain, uh, bioswells drainage on the side, and then a twelve-foot pedestrian bicycle path is being, being provided on the south side of Lanay Road with some additional six feet of landscaping. And this, this is representing the, the rear fence, the rear property line of these PA-13 units, which would be here. So when we talk about this ten-foot setback from this property line to where the building is, requesting to be able to reduce down to eight, uh, keep in mind that we've got quite a bit of things happening on the right-of-way side before you get to a travel lane, uh, and that's what this is, graphic is representing. So what we're looking at this evening is a request to approve the, the vesting tentative map for PA-13, along with the development plan, uh, and then, uh, there are other options to, uh, modify Option A, or refer back to staff, or make findings for denial. One thing to keep in mind is the STG, uh, map, the truck thirty-two thirteen, as law, as well as Development Plan twenty-two sixteen, this would set up a second option for this PA-13 property. The first option is what was approved in the specific plan, so the, the, uh, hundred and twenty-nine units, along with the specific plan development standards, still would be an entitlement for this PA-13, so that, along with this project, would have options. The STG group is in contract to do purchase PA-13, uh, they wanna make sure that their entitlements of what they wanna do is established with this, is about what's being proposed with these applications, uh, but there'll be the point where escrow is closed, STG would then have the ability to move forward with their plans, which, uh, if they approve tonight, would be that option. If for some reason that that escrow doesn't happen and STG doesn't end up purchasing this PA-13, the current, uh, owner, the Olson Two Twelve LLC, could still rely upon that original plan, uh, with the specific plan for development. So those, that's two options. There'll be a point where there's a map, that tentative map, whether it's this map or the previous, gets recorded. At the point that the map's recorded, then that accompanying development plan and this was, or the specific plan would need to then follow up with the design relation to that map. But with that, uh, I'd be happy to ask through any questions, but also, um, the architect is here to, uh, we have a presentation queued up.
Great, thank you, Darren, and please, join us.
Uh, my name is Daniel Gammon with Denelian Associates, and we have been the architects for this project, and I believe I have Adam and Ryan, one or the other, or both, on the phone.
Yeah, I'm, uh, Adam Tancredi for STG is on the phone.
Awesome, thanks, Adam. Um, so, I'm gonna introduce and walk through in a little bit more detail some of these fine points of this project, but I just have to say this, I'm so glad that we got to go after Triana Winery, because it has been said that homes is where jobs go to sleep at night. And so I, I can imagine some of the people they will have there, living in the, in PA-13, and one we're gonna come up with a groovy name for eventually, as well. Um, so, uh, Darcy, can I have the, Marcy, sorry, we have a Marcy and a Darcy, okay, Marcy?
So what I wanna do in the presentation is first give a little background on how this became, um, fewer structures, uh, on the sixteen acres, but with more households in it. Um, the, the guys at STG were very interested in fulfilling some of the, some of the dreamy intentions of the specific plan, which include providing a range of housing types and a range of price points. By introducing, um, accessory dwelling units into this neighborhood, that's in fact happening, um, because they are, they're, they're modestly sized, uh, and they are what we call naturally occurring affordable housing, in some cases, because they're just smaller units. The homes themselves are modestly sized, the primaries, and then the accessory dwelling units, um, by design, are roughly half the square footage of what each primary residence is.
Adam, do you wanna, um, we're waiting for the, for the presentation to come up, do you want to just give a quick introduction of how you guys, um, came abreast of the adding accessory dwelling units concept?
Yeah, sure, Daniel. Um, so, uh, first off, thank you, everyone, for your time tonight, I appreciate, uh, everyone's accommodation of adding us to this schedule. First off, thank you everyone for your time tonight. I appreciate everyone's accommodation of adding us to this schedule on this thing. So thank you for that. But yeah, to Daniel's question, when we first looked at this, at this PA 13, and we are, in our background, it's home, apartment development as well as industrial, but we, we were struggling with the fact that the entire master plan community of, you know, really didn't have built-to-rent scale. And that's, you know, it's, if you're reading the news or, you know, looking at what's going on in the world today, the built-to-rent market is, is so important and it's so needed. You know, there's a lot of that middle class that can't necessarily afford a home, but they want the home lifestyle. And what we've done here is essentially that, is provided something that's really missing from this overall community that can allow a young family that's in the area, the ability to have that. That was really important essentially for us. You know, as developers and also, you know, having families themselves really wanted to provide for this community. So that, that was kind of the, the initial thought process. And then also looking at it from a marketability standpoint of how do we differentiate ourselves from, you know, K-Hov or Shea Homes, the Trilogy Project? How do we stand out and, and not necessarily compete with them, but create more value overall for the entire master plan community? So that's, that's how we came up with this.
And perfect timing, Adam, because we now have the presentation ready to rock. Great. So can I have the next one? Great. So whoops.
Oh, it's not.
I can just say next. I, I know it pretty well. So. Okay. So this, this is all the heavy lifting in terms of the things we're asking for. It's the, the two tables are the elements of the modern farmhouse style and the development standards for the motor court. Gee, see a lot of green printing because that's what we have conformed with most of the requirements. There are a few that we had to elbow our way through a little bit in order to get the accessory dwelling units to work with the primary residents. I mentioned before, on the right-hand side, just some key points that we started with a specific plan that stresses attainable housing opportunities. We went and includes accessory dwelling units as a permitted use within the specific plan area. Then it refers you to the city's housing element, which some of the goals, policies and action items include providing an array of housing options for people at an array of income levels and specifically through the promotion of accessory dwelling units. And then I won't bore you with the details, but there's a few wonky points from the state ADU law that Darren already referred to that talks about how these homes, each home is entitled to have one of these by state law within the sort of boundaries that are defined there. Again, I won't read it point for point. So that's the, the heavy lifting and I'm going to, at DRC, there were a lot of questions about how does this property, how's it managed? Because Adam mentioned built-to-rent. And so the intention of this community is that all of the units are rented. The primary residences are and the accessory dwelling units are as well. So we've just put together a quick, a few quick bullet points. Can I have the next slide, please? On how the management will work and it will also address if there's ever a possibility of a for-sale exit strategy from the project. And Adam, if you can, can speak, we're still hoping the slide will come up soon. And if you have the presentation yourself, can you wing it from that? Adam, Ryan?
I'm, I'm here. I'm breaking up though. What did you just ask? Daniel? Sorry.
Sorry. We're again, we're having technical difficulties here and I'm hoping that while we fill the space, you can speak to the management issues, which would be Slide 3 in the package of that.
Yeah. Oh, absolutely. So like Daniel said, you know, these are all going to be rental units. So Daniel will eventually show you that we've, we've actually added amenities to this specific PA of a clubhouse, which also acts as a leasing office, a wine tasting room and a rec center, as well as a workout facility, pool and spa. So you have your resort-style amenities for a beautiful housing community, which is going to be great. So the management is going to be a third-party management company as, as is, as if you would manage like an apartment complex. You know, we, when we were talking with city council, or excuse me, Planning Commission on the, the DRC, you know, some questions were asked about, you know, well, what happens if, you know, you sell some of these lots or you don't? Well, the buyer of this particular project is going to be essentially buying the entire community. Even though you're able to option off and, and sell a single lot at a time, you know, we are open to having a deed restriction on the property so that doesn't happen. Even though we've done projects in build-to-rent where we've essentially sold off half, half of the units. And it doesn't necessarily matter because there is a sub-association, if that would happen, that would then partake with the third-party management. And they would keep that management going even after the houses are sold, to still manage those amenities and that process. So I hope that answers some of the questions. If not, I'm, I'm happy to, to answer any other questions and get more and more detail, you know, down the line if, if Planning Commission has any, any questions on that.
Great. Thanks, Adam. And we are back up and running, I think. Let me see. Ah, yes. So Darren already showed this. This is the site plan that was included in the specific plan. This is our proposed site plan. Darren already explained that sometimes in the nomenclature of motor court housing, they're known as a six-pack or an eight-pack. And so we changed them from six-packs to five-packs for this very critically important reason that to have six houses in there, we were left without adequate parking spaces for the accessory dwelling units. So by reducing a six-pack to a five-pack, we have a, in the auto court itself, a surface parking space for each of the accessory dwelling units that are in the cluster. So that was really important in this. And Darren mentioned it does kind of open up the space in the middle of that motor court, but I'll, I'll show you in a moment. But the, I want, if you wanted to go back for one second, the, there are landscaping pockets throughout the site. At the north along Lenee, there's a square at the end of each of the public streets. I don't have a laser pointer. Is that on here too?
It is.
Awesome. Okay. So there's a pocket park, there's a pocket park, there's a pocket park. There is this internal paseo that runs most of the length of the western side of the property. And then we have our clubhouse and leasing there and a pool, a pool court and a fitness room, specialty fitness and a dog run. So there's lots of open space around the site. Just want to show you a couple of those more closely. This is, whoops, sorry. That is a nicely appointed and landscaped pocket park. They are slightly different. And that's the nature of the paseo. So the house and then its yard captured and then a public walking space in between. The whole community was designed to be very highly walkable. Lots of sidewalks to lead you to those common amenity spaces. So this is the six-pack cluster plan from the specific plan. And this is our modified five-pack plan. What we've done is added this diagram from the, from the DRC, for those of you who were there, to distinguish between the primary residents and accessory dwelling units. And here it's very easy. The primaries are, are in gray and the accessory dwelling units are in blue. So what we've shown is pathways from the ADU parking spaces there and how they access the front door of their dwelling. One has to walk a little bit further than the others. These guys come out in a round to get into their accessory dwelling unit. With the, the different entries and the different approaches to the dwellings, it kind of tweaks the idea of is a yard, a front yard, a side yard or a rear yard in some cases, but generally speaking, that's how people circulate around the site. Again, I mentioned earlier that each accessory dwelling unit is about half the size by lot of the primary dwelling unit. The, there are two plans here that are right around 1,400 square feet for the primary unit and the ADUs are less than 700. We have one bigger home that's at 1,700 square feet, which is Plan 3, and its ADU is at 840 or so. This is a diagram to highlight the variances from setbacks that we're requesting. The yellow highlighted areas, we had the backyards are reduced to something less than 10 feet. It varies a little bit because the houses are orthogonal and the property lines are not. So it's a teeny tiny little wedge there that makes the dimension variable. On this side where that home, that's Plan 2, is on an outside corner, requires a deeper yard than it typically would. And we have varied that in that situation. That occurs eight times in the property. And then down here, these two homes were already really compact. And to make the accessory dwelling units work in those homes, we reduced their front yard setback a little bit, but there's still a setback beyond the sidewalk plus a tree lawn. And I have a photo to show you that later, where the entry to the homes have, we're trying to treat them as almost like a brownstone kind of walk-up into front door sort of situation. So that's just a quick illustration of the variances having to do with, with yards. This was the proposed landscape plan from the specific plan. And I just want you to note quickly the sort of placement of the trees and pockets of planting. This is, sorry, it's a little bit smaller, but here the, the number of trees, street trees and internal cluster trees are the same. And the pockets of planting are stunningly similar from our proposal to the specific plan. And just to really blow it up for you, this is backyard along Lenee. And reduced from the 10 to somewhat less. And you can see different furniture arrangements that are placed in there that actually show their usable space. And some of the space is for ADU and some of it is for primary house. So they're kind of side by side with fences in between them for privacy. And here are some images. One big shift from DRC, for those of you who are at DRC, we received a comment asking us about the fence design that separated these yards from the bike path and all that landscaping on Lenee. And that has been worked through in working with planning staff. Thank you, Darren. We have proposed an alternate fence there that instead of what we call zoo fence, which is just pickets, we went to a more solid, we kept the brick base and the, and the stone, the brick pilasters, but filled that in with a more solid fence. And it just makes these yards so much more private than that open fence did. When he showed the street diagram earlier, you could see that sort of zoo-style fence and a combination of folks thought that just wasn't the right thing, even though the specific plan required that. So we've adapted this from other fence types in the specific plan. This is an aerial view of, of the cluster itself. You can see how the ADU parking spaces, which are here, open up the space a lot more. And what that has the effect of doing is giving more windows on each house exposure to light. So that's sort of a nice perk of having the five instead of the six. Just a couple of other views. The one on the left is, is more a street view into the court. And the one on the right shows the Plan 1 that I mentioned, where we have reduced the yard requirement along there by three feet. And we have all of the entries to that, that home are articulated with this nice porch elements that they are, they frame the entry into the court. So we like that sort of walkable quality, staying consistent with that throughout the neighborhood. There's a view along Lenee. This is our, our visualization of the section that Darren showed earlier, and that's the changed fence that creates the privacy for those yards. Because there is an awful lot going on out here in sort of the pedestrian and bike path. And there you can just see a flattened, flatter view. That's our, that's the biggest house, the biggest ADU in the plan is the one that stretches along what is the backyard. Just a, just a quick word on the clubhouse amenity. It is, it functions as the leasing because this is intended to be a built, a rental community. And lots of features. There's just a ton of indoor/outdoor space and I'll show you a rendering of that and in a moment. Because basically this whole neighborhood was approached as if it were a multifamily apartment community. And so typically you see nice lavish amenities and these for the number of units that are here totally, we went from 129 lots to 107, but there's two, two dwellings in each of those. So it's two, a total of 214 households here. And the amount of amenity that STG is proposing for that many households is really lavish. It's, it's like a resort. So it just lists some of the features that we have going on there. And then that's a little shot of the back of that in, that doesn't face the street. This is faces back into the property of the shared community space, leasing center and so on. And then this is the, the pool. It's quite a large pool, a spa, a fitness room and a specialty fitness room and a sort of pathway between them. You can, I just want to point out right there, this, this is a very nice path that comes down for the rest of the community and leads into this open space, which is shared by everyone in the community. The dog park is over here. That, this is one of my favorite parts of the site. This is that pathway that leads you down into the area of all the outdoor recreation, the active recreation, the pool, specialty fitness and fitness rooms. And that might be it. Oh, no. So this, this, I can enlarge this, but I, let me talk about parking for a moment. The, we were concerned about that from the beginning. And a nice feature about there's, that's a public road, that's a public road. That and that are both public roads. So we have a lot of public roads sort of interfaced with our community. And along all of those and also along Park View, which is the street at the end, you can see these teeny tiny hash marks there. We have on-street parking all over. So with 107 lots, each primary residence has two parking spaces in a garage. Each accessory dwelling unit has one surface parking space within the cluster. So they're all parked on, on that basis. And then in addition to that, there are 121 street spaces. So if you take all that math together, that works out about four parking spaces per lot. So this parking is very generous throughout the neighborhood. That was a concern really early on in the planning process and we thought, we believe that we've really held that and honored that requirement. And as Darren referred to earlier, I know my, my friends at STG are just really raring to go on this. We're very excited about it. Once again, I'm so glad to have followed that winery project that's bringing jobs to Paso and we're bringing homes for those people to come home and sleep in. So that's just a quick tour through what was proposed and what we have now. And I'm happy to answer questions as well.
Great. Thank you very much. Commissioner Christian, some questions?
Just a couple of questions. The, the different floor plans, Darren. So you're asking the commission tonight to allow the applicant to just go with one plan? One rendering plan or elevation plan, sorry?
No, I think there are many, there's three different plans and other elevations. So there's multiple architectural plans proposed. I think what I was trying to say was the specific plan indicated three architectural themes.
Right.
And what we're looking for is just kind of the one architectural theme. And Daniel, maybe you can hit on that a little bit more is the, what's being proposed as the modern farmhouse, which is a permitted style in the specific plan. But these, they're looking at doing that style throughout all the, the 107 buildings. They're going to have different variations of that throughout. But so what I was just bringing to the Planning Commission's attention was the, the one farmhouse style.
And then they're just going to do variations of that particular style.
And they're not going to have a Spanish style and they're not going to have a, you know, another one.
There was a, and there was an interest, there was a philosophical position behind doing that as well, is that we wanted the, a whole neighborhood to read as a village that had a kind of a uniformity among the dwellings. And then on the two common area buildings out in front, we call the leasing center clubhouse. We always call that the big house because it's the most articulated, the most ornamented building in the entire neighborhood. And then the fitness room is the bar. And so it's, architecture kind of reflects that. So we wanted a homogeneity among where the residents were, a spectacular bit for the leasing and clubhouse. And then kind of a nudge, nudge wink, wink to the local agriculture with the fitness building.
Okay. Thank you. So the, the other question I had was, could you clarify again? It was, it kind of seemed a little confusing. For the setback changes, where the locations will be that, that the applicant's requesting? requesting the setback allowances?
Um, boy, I don't know what I did here. Someone else answered? Ah, got it, okay.
This is a, this exhibit, I think, is it?
Yes, this is, so the, that five-pack is the essential cluster. There are 21 clusters and one-half cluster that make up the overall community, and the, the two on the bottom is, is that setback we asked to go from eight to thr, uh, eight to five, so that reduced by three feet. This one, where this primary residence is not tucked on the inside of the cluster, but is outside on a street face, that setback also went from 10 to a little bit under 10. That occurs eight times throughout the entire community. And then here, the backyards generally were reduced from, were asked for a reduction from 10 to somewhat less than 10, and I wish I could be super specific, but it varies because it's not parallel. Some of them get as high as nine and change, so it's just a move away from the 10, and that is everywhere that backyard occurs, and sometimes the clusters rotate through the plans, so that's highlights where we're asking for variance on setbacks.
Okay, and then the last clar, or, well, one of the other clarifications I had was there were 107 ADUs and 21 of those would be over 800 square feet?
Yes.
And then the remainder of 86 would be under 850 square feet, is that correct?
Significantly under, they're actually under 700, so.
Okay. And then for staff, one other, well, I guess maybe this is for David, and I think I know the answer to this, but I just want to confirm this. When we did the specific plan, I know that there were mitigation issues for traffic and utilities, things like that, so they weren't required to go through because they're calling them ADUs, and because they're ADUs, we didn't have to do anything else with traffic with new units, right?
That's correct, so we can't require any mitigations for ADUs.
Right.
But the full traffic mitigations for the entire project still apply to PA 13 and all the PAs.
I'm sorry, what was the last part?
All the mitigation measures, so those have been carried forward from PA 13's map.
Right.
The first one to this map, so traffic, water, sewer, all that, is, is still applies to this map.
Okay.
But the 107 units, the traffic generated from that, we can't require any kind of mitigation for that traffic.
Okay, thanks, thanks for clarifying that, David, I appreciate it. I don't have any other questions at this time.
Commissioner Kamal?
Well, Commissioner Christensen, kind of hit on some of my concern. The specific plan for this has a 1,293 residential units that it applied, and essentially what this plan does is take the 129 and makes it 107, but at the same time, it splits the primary resident with a ADU, auxiliary dwelling unit. And so I guess it's more to Dave again, what I see is an 85 increase in dwelling units, because you're going from, you're going from 129 to 107, but then you're adding 107 in, so the delta is 85 more units, and by itself, on the specific plan with all of these, total 1,293 units, might not be significant, but if we take the next one, which might be residential number five, PA five, and we end up having ADUs on that and ADUs on the others, and my point is that if you have a traffic study that's based on X number of dwelling units that generate X number of trips, you have something that's X plus Y. In this case, the Y would be based on 85 additional dwelling units or additional trips, four or five trips per day per dwelling unit. So the mitigation measures become somewhat, in my mind, cloudy, if it becomes significant to all the other parcels that become, that come before the commission. So that what you have is basically a small impact here, but how many more ADUs will we be doing, and does that put into question the X plus Y, the Y being the additional trips that are generated by these ADUs?
Um, well, so far, we have four planning areas that have submitted their plans, going to plan check, and none of those, none of those have ADUs, well, I know you're talking, I know.
And I, and I'll concede, one of these, in the specific plan, does talk about 80, because I think it's maybe a PA five.
Right.
So it's already been included in discussion in the specific plan for one area, but it wasn't discussed here, so I don't see a significant impact of 85 additional residents generating an overwhelming cause to be concerned for mitigation, but I'm just wondering if that trend continues for all of the Chandler Ranch and all of the old Beechwood and stuff, does that call into question the mitigation measures that were generated by traffic studies that were dependent on the number of dwelling units that now have increased by maybe 50%?
Right.
Because of ADUs.
Yeah, I understand. I think I'll fall back on what my professor used to tell me when I ask questions, it depends.
Yeah.
So if the whole, if the whole project came in, or let's just say three-quarters of the project came in with ADUs, that would be a significant amount of traffic that'd be generated, there's no doubt about it. It's, it's a hard, it's a really difficult question to answer, because a lot of the, a lot of the mitigations were overridden by council, right? So they were class one impacts that we could not fully mitigate. They were, you know, I mean, we did, we did, we required the best they could do on some of the traffic impacts, but they still didn't reduce whatever the impact was back to what was occurring before the project moved forward. You know, it, it's one of the difficulties with the California State ADU law. We have ADUs, actually, we have, we permit a lot of ADUs around town, and there's no, you know, I can't charge traffic impact fees unless they're above a certain, above a certain size, and it's proportional to the size of the existing structure. So this is a challenge that the state of California has given us.
Right.
I think in this case, the roads are all right-sized. I mean, there is plenty of capacity within the project and on Niblick Road, Creston Road to handle the, the excess traffic.
Yeah, I looked, I looked at Lene and saw the traffic numbers and the additional traffic here is negligible for those local roads, basically.
Well, it's still, I mean, it's still a concern from a traffic impact standpoint. You know, I think as, as time goes on and we see how ADUs impact the city as a whole, we may, we may be able to address that in our circulation element, you know, looking at different, you know, looking at where we're going, what we can expect in the future, and mitigating for that as we move forward. That's one potential way to address that. That's not part of this plan tonight, the, that's part of the general plan.
I'm bringing up something that's probably beyond the scope of this.
Well, I mean, I think maybe, just to kind, if I could, and tell me if I made an error, but I think the, with the state promulgating an ADU, requiring us to do ADUs, we cannot mitigate for traffic with an approved ADU. I think based on what we're seeing tonight, the state would say that we've actually reduced the density by 27 housing units, so because we cannot mitigate for ADUs, we, and we've reduced from 129 to 107. We've actually reduced the mitigatable, if that is a word, single-family residents on that site. Now, I don't know if I got that right, but it's just, I think maybe a way to look at it.
I think that's generally correct, and basically, you've got to kind of understand that for the last 60 years with planning law, a unit was a unit, and typically those units had to cover whatever their impacts were, and the state basically decided that that wasn't working any longer, and that there had been a housing crisis of such severity created by implementation of those sort of rules, they basically just preempted those rules, which the state had created originally as well, and basically said, we're not going to count ADUs, and that you can build two ADUs on every single-family lot in the state. So it's not just this project that could increase units, literally there's 10, 10,000 ADUs that can be built within this town without any mitigation measures.
It's probably permitted on existing lots now.
Yeah, exactly. So I think, so really what you have to think about is, there is a potential that those units create new impacts to traffic, water and sewer that aren't covered by our standard fees and mitigations. And basically what the state said is, instead of the developer having to cover those costs, which has been the, how we've done planning for the last couple decades, it's, the general public's going to have to cover that cost. So if we have a traffic problem at an intersection, we're not going to lean on the developer to fix it, the community's going to have to cover that cost.
I just didn't know if it, it put into question of the environmental mitigations that were part of the specific plan, but based on what you're telling me, the state law says it doesn't, so.
Yeah, the state says doesn't, ADUs don't count towards CEQA. They just made that rule up, and that's the rule now.
Yeah, thank you. My other question, I think you already, the gentleman already answered, that these are not going to be owned by individuals, they'll be owned by a management, they'll be managed by a manager, and so the ADU and their primary unit won't have one owner, it'll be, all the clusters will be under one ownership, and they'll rent out or lease out each unit individually, the primary unit and the ADU separately.
Yes, that's the premise, Adam, if you want to add anything to that, but that is the premise going into the committee.
Yeah, no, he's, yeah, he's spot on, no, he's absolutely correct.
Okay. And the ADU would have the open parking space, and the primary residence would have the covered space.
Uh, two in a garage, yes.
Yeah, okay, that's all the questions I have, thank you.
Commissioner Amaro?
Uh, I guess my question is, with the setbacks, and you might have explained it, but is there an impact to certain, like, backyards or side yards with the setback changes, or are those in locations that aren't going to impact like the, the end user's property essentially?
So the, the variances that we're asking for on the yards do impact the outdoor living space of these homes, and then that are just, they're not specifically called out an amount per house in the specific plan, but they're generally regarded as this yard will belong to this house.
Yeah.
And so it does impact that a little bit, and we've split those spaces up into being some for ADUs and some for primary residences, but yes, that dimension from house to fence is, has been reduced from 10 to sometimes as little as 86. So it impacts the space a little bit, but the, we really wanted to illustrate, we're used to working in cozy spaces, we do a lot of smaller-scale things, and just wanted to show that it is entirely possible to furnish, enjoy, and, and live in those spaces, even if they're a little more trim than they were originally proposed to be.
Sure, sure, and then you, you mentioned it, but I wanted, how many households and total households will this have, and total number of parking spots, including street parking, what was the number there?
Sure, so it's, and I don't have the added number in my head, but it's a total of 214 dwelling, dwelling units, half ADUs, half primary residences, each primary residence has two covered parking spaces and a garage, each accessory dwelling unit has one surface space, and then there's 121 first-gone, first-served guest spaces throughout the community, so it's a very high total for a residential neighborhood.
But it is possible guests would have to travel from a get, like, off-street parking fairly far to visit a friend or whatever that would be, like, they would?
It's a hypothetical possibility.
Sure, okay. That's all the questions I have.
Commissioner Koberu, please?
Thank you, sir. So I was on DRC, and the first thing I will say is I'm really happy about the fencing change.
Yes.
In fact, I think I was the one that brought it up, so kudos to that. Darren, could you explain to me just real quick, the open space policy? I understand that open space has to be provided for anything over 800 square feet, correct?
For the AD, we're talking about the ADUs specifically.
The ADUs, right, so if I'm understanding, the idea is that the open space, they're asking for the open space, the contributor to that be the clubhouse, be the pool area, be all these other amenities, so to speak, right? So the open space theory is not open space directly adjacent or near the ADU, is that correct?
Well, the private open space, I think the intent is that it be near and be there specifically for that unit, like, we're all used to having a, whether it's a patio or balcony or something. So again, we go back to the, the ADU laws, and what it indicates is that if you have an ADU, 800 or less square feet, the city can't require a yard area if it's going to preclude someone from the, being able to build that unit. They're taking away development standards so that makes it easier for people to build accessory dwelling units. So that being said, so if it's less than 800 square feet, then open space, private open space for those units does not have to be provided for. So if it's over 800, which there are 21 that are about 850, then those units, that's what really would come down to this discussion with the planning commission, is for the 21 units, because technically for the 86, for that are less than, than 800, what they're showing is possible, and state, the state law and even the city's ADU law would say for those lot units, eight, less than 800, we wouldn't have to require the private open space. They're designing a community where there's other places to go for common open space, but not private for those units. The 847, the 21 that are over the 800, I think that's the question, is on those, where then we get into the city's ordinance saying you need to provide 200 square feet of private open space.
Darren, if I might, is, is, I went back and double-checked the data on this, and in fact, the large ADU is with the large primary, and it's that one that stretches along the back, and it actually has, it exceeds the amount of required open space adjacent to it that the city's implementation ordinance requires.
So you're saying it, it provides over 200 square feet?
It does, yes, 295.
And that's on the large?
Yes.
What about the others?
Um, the, the others vary, they have the Plan Twos, some, Plan Twos are a lot, thank you very much for that diagram. So can you go back one more? Or I can go back one more, maybe? Uh, yes, okay, so, nope, I had, sorry, I have to go forward to the other one, it doesn't have all the yard data on it. The one right in the middle, sorry, image nine, sorry for being goofy. Okay, so, for example, this ADU has space that would have been the primary residence's backyard, so that's how that works on that one, which is why his number is very high. This ADU and primary have all of that yard stretched out along there, and there's, it's fenced in the middle, so this ADU has 295 square feet, and the primary has a large chunk there as well, so that's how that works. These two guys here are, are smaller, they have very little, they have a little captured space there in which is, that's like 150 square feet.
So my question would be then, on the, on the unit that's there next to the large unit, that has the ADU near the, it looks like a fence line there or something, that has the backyard, where's the open space for the primary unit?
It's, it's a combination of at-grade and then, and above-grade balconies.
So the, the primary unit has a balcony then?
Yes, all the primary units have balconies.
They do?
Yes.
Okay. So in this, in today's presentation, you're asking for the commission to make an exception, or to grant an exception, on the units, the ADU, ADU units that do not have 200 square feet of open space, private open space. You're asking us to allow the clubhouse, I just want to make sure I'm clear on what we're being asked to do on the open space theory.
Right, so what it ends up being is that... So what it ends up being is that the units less than 800 don't have to provide it.
Right.
The units over, he's indicating he's providing it, so he complies. He's providing the 200 or more square feet.
On, on the portion of the ADUs, correct? Not all of them? Or is that am I incorrect?
On the, on all of the ADUs that are over 800 square feet.
Over 800, yes. So over 800 ADUs square feet, they have 200 square feet of private open space?
Yes.
Okay.
If you, if you read the project description that was provided, it indicates that they're asking for, what they indicated was a variance without, we're asking for a modification for open space related to ADUs. I wanted to give a little more specifics that for the all, for most of them that are over the, less than the 800, the ordinances don't require the open space because of the size. Come to find out, Daniel did, looked at, or David, I'm sorry, looked at his plans and indicated that they do, they are providing private open space for the ADUs that are over 800 in these plans.
Okay.
So we're not necessarily needing anything specific from the planning commission on open space. We were able to kind of through this process determine how each of it was done. However, just like the question of traffic or parking or how, what are these impacts of all these units? We still want these folks to have a, a place to, to go have, you know, take their dog, do different things. That's the discussion of the added amenities, because the specific plan design for PA 13 didn't have a clubhouse, didn't have a fitness, didn't have the dog park, all those amenities that are being provided here. So if there was a request for the planning commission to not allow or not require the open space, the, the, the exchange would be these added amenities that weren't originally required for the plan was the discussion. But technically, they're showing that they are providing the, the open space by the size of the ADUs as well as the larger ones actually physically providing that.
Okay. I appreciate that. I think we're on the same page. I hope so. And I would, just to be clear, I was only referencing the ones that were over 800, because I again, just wanted to make sure we're clear. And again, just for clarity, emergency services has reviewed everything? They're good with the turn radius, radiuses and all of that good stuff within the clusters?
Correct. And they're actually, we have engineered plans because they're concurrently, we're working on final maps, we're working on improvement plans and those have all been reviewed by emergency services.
Awesome. And then last comment, during DRC, I had made a comment about solar and it was something that you guys were going to maybe investigate a little bit or look into?
Yes, sir.
No, no changes to that?
The, oh, you know, I did, before I speak, I got, I, I got confused.
No, I can, I can, I can speak to that. We, we are adding solar on the project.
Okay, that's what I thought and I, we're working at two at the same time. I know that I, I couldn't, I got them briefly confused for a moment.
Just to be clear, he indicated he is.
So solar, solar will be a huge part of the project, yes.
Okay, so that is being added?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Awesome. All right, no more questions.
Commissioner Kober?
Yes, thank you. Just a few things. What's the timing between the construction of these units and the improvement of linera road?
Adam, do you know that one?
That, that's a tough one because Danny Brosay is the one who's doing the improvement to, to the public roads. So I, I really don't know the answer to that question. That's a really actually great question that I would love to know the answer to as well.
Let me, let me phrase it a different way to staff. Would we issue full permits, including occupancy permits without that road improvement occurring?
Mark, can you speak a little more into your mic?
Sure, I'll pull it closer. Oh, sorry, oh, please.
Did you catch the question?
But I think we understand your question.
Okay.
David Athy, City Engineer, just to re, just to make sure I'm clear on the question. It was about, are we going to issue site improvement permits without road permits being issued? Maybe just so I can, just so I'm clear.
Let me rephrase a little bit. We've looked at some really attractive sections for linera, showing all of the public uses within the rideaway, the distance from the curb line to the fence to these units. Does that happen as a package or are we going to get houses that are going to be built with existing linera for some period of time?
So the developer, Olson 212, Danny Brosay, has released the plans for both Sherwood, so continuing on Sherwood down, down to PA 15, maybe see if we can show that. Yeah, there we go. That'd be great. So this section of the road right here, it's currently designed to about this point here. They're coming in with the rest of this design, actually comes around the corner and comes down to Hanson. At the same time, Parkview Lane will need to be completed here before any of these are occupied. Same with Sherwood Road and Airport Road. And they've currently bid these out and they're moving towards construction and they've provided, they've got a contractor to do the work. So it's, it all has to happen together because they, because they have to build the roads to get the water to PA 13 and to get the sewer. So it all has to happen at the same time and they're moving forward with that.
Okay, great. That's the key to the answer, I guess. Thank you. Rental community managed by another entity, will they require the use of garages for vehicles?
Adam, you could back me up on that one, but the way.
Yeah, one, yes, is the short answer to that. Yes, absolutely.
Can I just want to, want to mention one thing? In a, in a managed community, the, it's in the interest of the owners who are attracting residents to the community to have quite strict standards about what people can do. Question came up at DRC, can somebody park in front of their garage door? And that's one of the most strictly enforced things. Your lease agreement for a renter and/or your HOA agreement for someone else addresses those types of things to maintain a high level of, I'm going to call it livability, even though that's kind of cliche.
Good. Thank you. Because I guess the concern I had was, and I'll show I'm not a native to this state, but my observation is that disproportionately people use their garages here for storage rather than for vehicles. And should that occur in this kind of environment, I can see the hundred and whatever street spaces being gone immediately.
It's, it's.
And I can also see ADU people that will have two vehicles who will need one of those street spaces. So I'm just wondering how all of the parking truly fits in the real world. And I think the fact that it's managed and owned by an entity gives you a club that you don't typically have and you can require that to occur. So I think that's encouraging. Help me understand a little bit, so the previous plan that was part of the specific plan for this neighborhood showed a couple of larger neighborhood park areas. They were diagrammed in green, they were labeled as neighborhood parks, but from what I could find in going back to the specific plan, they really weren't, yeah, it's those areas. There really wasn't articulators to what those were.
Right.
When you looked at the Turtle Creek plan and when you looked at the overlook, there were very specific diagrammatic things about what was going into those parks as well as listings of things. So I could understand how that occurred. When I look at the bedroom compositions here, Plan Two is three bedrooms, Plan Three is three bedrooms. Those are family units to me. They're going to be at a reasonably affordable price point presumably for the motor court units. Obviously, the ADU is adding yet another threshold of affordability. And all of that's great, but I see kids in these places and I'm not sure how the resort style meets the needs of all of the kids. Pools, great. Where's the open space? Do they go to Turtle Creek Park? They cross a fairly major significant road to get there? Help me understand, you've put in these pocket parks, which abut linera. How does that work for families who want to recreate it? We talked about open spaces, really the private open spaces not immediately contiguous to some of these units, yes, fenced backyards and so forth, but where is there some room to roam around here? Does it have to go to Turtle Creek or where, how is that accommodated?
Can I, can I jump in and answer that, Daniel? So, so what we need to remember also is we are a very small glimpse of a master plan community. PA 13 is one community out of 26 where you've got, you know, five miles of walking trails, you've got pickleball courts, you've got basketball courts, you have wide open space, vast majority of the entire master plan community. So if, if someone like a family is really looking for, you know, just grass to, to run around and the pocket parks at our, at our PA 13 is not enough, you can easily cross the street and now you've got acres upon acres of open lush fields. You've got beautiful wineries of grapes that are going to be grown by Danny Brosay and the association. And you've, you've got that right, right there within the whole master plan community.
Good. Thank you. I expected that would be the response because there is a lot of open space with Turtle Creek. A question on the overlook, which lies fairly close to this as well. It's listed as member parking on the site plan, so I assume there's a membership component to that, that is a paid component to that as part of the specific plan. Are these people who rent these units members that can use the overlook facilities also for recreation?
That is correct.
Okay. Without additional fear, it's built into their lease agreements?
It's built into their lease agreements.
Okay, great. That's another measure of open space itself. Great, thank you. I think that's all my questions for now.
Thank you. I do have a question. We had commented on the ability of these to be sold, the potential. And if that is, would those ADUs be deed restricted to be, remain rental as part of the, you know, that building unit? Or would they end up being sold separately and then the ADU is gone?
So, so per state law, we are not allowed to subdivide the ADU from the primary residence. So if, if they ever were to be sold, which we've even talked about putting a deed restriction where the entire community would have to be sold as one community to ease, to ease the council's kind of concern on that matter. But, but if, if for whatever reason that doesn't happen and let's say, you know, 20 years from now, a developer buys a community and wants to sell individual lots, they only want to sell half the community, they would have to sell it as per the subdivision map that's being approved.
Great, thank you. So we essentially have taken away 22 units. Do those 22 units then go back into the pool of units available to the Chandler specific plan or do they go back?
That is actually correct. Yeah. No, that's, and we're talking with Shay right now, who is essentially wanting those units to add to their PAs.
And now for staff, I'm going to geek out a little bit. This 107 ADUs will add to our RENA allocation?
Correct.
Do we know where they will fall? Will they fall on the low or the moderate on the RENA scale?
I think it's ADUs by design or, or the lower income, is that correct?
I think in the housing element, there's certain assumptions where certain percentages are allocated to moderate and certain to low. So we will just, that's the assumption is as they're built or they'll just fall into those categories by default based on the market studies that were done during the housing element preparation.
I would probably guess they end up in the moderate.
Well, I think we're just going to use what the market rate assumptions were when the housing element was done. So if we produce 100, we'll look at that market study that was done and go, okay, this percent qualifies for low, this is moderate and that's what we'll file. We aren't going to go back and try to see what things are actually renting for.
Okay. So even though it may not be low, we would assign it low?
Yes. So the housing element, when it was certified, made certain assumptions that ADU production was going to be spread among these categories. So we'll just follow that through the whole housing element cycle.
Perfect, thank you. And that's all the geeking out I'm going to do to this evening. So open it up to public comment and since we're ultimately almost lonely in the chamber, Marcy, any?
No callers.
Hearing none, I will close public comment and bring it back to the commission for comments. Commissioner Marla, any comments?
No comments, no.
Commissioner Conley, any further comments?
Well, I just thought of something kind of minor, but we're all kind of going to electric cars. I was wondering if there'll be 240 in the garage. That's maybe too detailed to ask, but with solar power, maybe 240, level two charging for electric cars.
I suspect that would be a great amenity for the folks renting the place and that may be a thought.
Yeah, yeah. No other comments.
Commissioner Christian?
Thank you. Some of my comments are, I like the design. It's a nice design. I am disappointed in the compactness of it. I feel like it's gone away from a little bit of the spirit of the specific plan. Unfortunately, when the specific plan was approved, the new ADU laws weren't in place in the, in the form that they are today, which has honestly taken a lot away from the city and the way they, I feel, have the ability to manage certain things. So for me, that's, that's a disappointment. I am glad to hear that the larger ADUs do get their 200 square feet of private, private open space. I don't believe that common open space, particularly in this development, is actually very accommodating. As one of the other commissioners pointed out, there's really not a lot of park space and you're asking families to really transit out of the community, whether it's walking, biking or what have you, to another location, which that, that community was designed for that, which I, I believe was a good concept. I'm having a really hard time with this density for several reasons. The variance allows that to happen is what it seems like to me. And as a planning commissioner, we don't get many, many things to say about a track like this as they circumvent and add a tremendous amount of units, which I wouldn't say that the city doesn't need the units. We do need the units and I was really hoping that this project would be, again, affordable housing for people to buy. I think that that was something I was really hoping for with the specific plan as well as I was, many people commented with me publicly about that and they were excited that we would have that opportunity, which it doesn't seem like in some of these cases that's going to happen. I'm not in favor of allowing for the variances. I think that it alludes to us being in favor of the impact that this will, will give the city. And personally, I think, I get it, it's a smart workaround in a lot of ways. And I'm not opposed to ADUs. I'm, I'm a big fan of ADUs. But in this case, I feel like we've just gone too far. But it's not because of the ADUs. I think it's because the compactness, the tightness of this development. The other aspect is the concerning thing with the overall introduction of so many homes. And again, this is something that the state has taken away from the city, but you know, planning fees, the impact on, on our infrastructure, our water, sewer, the streets. And I understand that, you know, David's point that, that, you know, we can handle it, but can we handle the next, you know, 100, 200, 300 ADUs potentially? Don't know. And, and maybe that's something that I will live to see, but in my, in my view, I'm not in favor of the, of the variances for the setbacks. And I do like the design style. I think it's a very nice design style. I like that they went with just the modern farmhouse. I like that they're using some different elevations to do that. Some of the other design features like front decks as open space, I don't know. I've seen a lot of houses, nobody ever really uses that five feet of space, but I could be wrong in that as well, too. So those are my comments at this point in time and I'm welcome to, to hear anybody else's comments.
Commissioner Kober?
I was on DRC when I saw this as well and, and actually, the staff report talked about how DRC was generally in favor and I think that's an accurate statement, but we also sent it to the full planning commission because there's a lot of details associated with this thing that needed to be discussed by six or seven of us instead of just three of us. Part of that was born from some of the frustration I have and it's not geared towards this project or this applicant at all, but it's with the mandates by the state that we're forced into certain things and I won't pontificate on that, it's already been covered. But it leads me to have concerns about from a density perspective, not, not counting the ADUs as a density in numeric form, but simply the physical context of putting these units together. The open spaces, the driveways, the parking spaces, the entries, the distance and walking to entries and so forth. This is a very, very compressed, compact development, more so than we've seen. I, I think it's analogous to some of the things you see in slow, but I don't think passive has seen a development.
I've seen a development that will be this quite, and I'll use the word intense instead of dense purposely. And so I get down to the point of looking at the variances that are being requested. And I think in one half, I say to myself, we can actually hold this project to standards which may mean a change in the ADUs. Then I look at the numbers. And the numbers, the variance that we're talking about, you know, it's a foot here or there. It's a foot and a half in this spot and it's 22 inches in this spot. And I'm just paraphrasing. And I really have a problem saying that that's enough of a discrepancy that I would say that this project doesn't work. So I think it works. I think the design team has done a good job designing as best you can within, again, what I think is a very tight community. And it's one that I will support. But I do have some significant concerns along the lines of what my other fellow commissioners or commissioner has outlined with the overall aspects of the project itself and the way it works and feels.
And Commissioner Kober.
Thank you. Yeah, it's interesting because I was also on DRC. And I'm remembering a lot of the conversation that took place and the dense nature of the entire project. In fact, I literally remember making the comment, where are these kids going to play? Are they going to be playing in the sidewalk? And they're going to be playing in the street, in the parking area? I was concerned then, as I am now, that it is a lot in a very compact area. However, affordable housing is something that we direly, direly need in Pass Robles. I do, like Commissioner Christiansen mentioned, I do wish that these were homes for sale because that's another issue we have is people being able to afford to buy in our community. We need to keep the people here. And in order to keep them here, they got to be able to afford to purchase. And I wish that were the case. And I think that's just going to be a battle we're going to have for a long time coming. The farmhouse look, I like it. I think the design of the units, I like. It's not the units themselves that I have an issue with. It is how compact everything is kind of put in the area. And for the sake of continuously echoing what fellow commissioners have already alluded to, it's just, it's a lot in one spot. And not sure in this case, like Commissioner Kober has mentioned, you know, that this minor setback request, okay, is that a make or break type scenario? I don't think so. I think it's livable. I just wish there was more space. I mean, it's such a nice area. I wish there was more space just in general and everything wasn't so compact. And I guess I'll leave it at that.
So I agree with many of the comments from my fellow commissioners. I do think that if Pass Robles is going to get affordable housing, I think we need to think about a more dense community. And it may not be something we're used to, may not be something we like, but it may be someplace where we have to go. I am not fond of the state promulgating the ADU rules. I think Pass Robles is being punished along with other communities for some of those communities that had exclusionary building practices. And that's disappointing. But in the end, I do compliment the applicant for thinking ever so slightly outside of the box and being able to increase the density of their project legally significantly. I think that is a well-thought plan. So with that, I will entertain a motion.
I'm happy to make a motion.
Commissioner Kober.
I move that we approve Draft Resolution A, approving vesting tentative track map 3213 and PD 22-166, subject to the site-specific conditions of approval.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Any further comment? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kober.
Aye.
Commissioner Connelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Marlowe.
Aye.
Commissioner Christiansen.
No.
Commissioner Kober.
Aye.
Chairperson Neal.
Aye.
Motion passes five to one.
All right. I think we're on to the consent agenda as soon as I can get to the agenda. I do have a clarification for February 6th DRC meeting. I believe that was the meeting where I was having incredible technical difficulties and I didn't actually join the meeting. So if we can line me out, that would be great. So do I have a motion to approve the consent?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
I was getting that correction tracked. Okay, who was the first on that?
Kober. Christiansen.
All right, Commissioner Kober.
Aye.
Commissioner Christiansen.
Aye.
Commissioner Connelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Marlowe.
Aye.
Commissioner Kober.
Aye.
Chairperson Neal.
Aye.
Passes six zero with the amendment.
And on to other reports. Pass Robles Street Ad hoc. I see that there's a meeting next week? Two weeks?
27th.
27th. So I suspect there's not an update then.
Yeah, we're working on that. We do have a vacancy on that ad hoc committee. So we are looking to appoint a member to serve on that and attend the next meeting.
I'd be willing to do that, yeah.
Anybody else like to attend?
Sir?
Seeing none? Mr. Christiansen, you're on it.
So excited. Thank you, guys.
I'm excited. We're already almost done. What are you doing?
That's why I'm excited. I'm super excited.
If you're getting on, could you think we're almost done?
Yeah, famous last words.
Housing Constraints and Opportunities Committee zoning code update report. I can hardly wait to read that.
Yeah, no report tonight. We're continuing to just work with a consult on that.
So Development Review Committee rotation schedule, March is Kober, Neal, and Christiansen. We were lucky enough to get a reprieve yesterday. But any conflicts in the next month or two?
The only conflict I have, I believe, is in April. And I want to say it's the 17th. Yes, it would be the 17th. I won't be available for that one. If someone can cover for me.
I can do that.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Marlowe.
And I might be getting way ahead of myself, but I am scheduled to be out of town on Monday, the 16th of October.
Holy smokes.
Yep, I know. But we can wait for that if we need to. But I just already know because I just booked my airfare yesterday.
I'll never remember if I volunteered for that. We'll wait.
We can wait for that one.
Sleep well at night, though. I can probably cover that one for you. And now on to planning commissioners' comments. Commissioner Marlowe.
No comments, just appreciate being here. Thanks.
Commissioner Connelly.
Yeah, thank you for allowing some mistakes for new commissioners.
Commissioner Christiansen.
I want to say, great job. You guys did well. So I don't think there's really any mistakes your first time. Is there? I don't think there. You can have as many as you want, really. Yeah.
Always keeping score.
We're still making them.
No, no, I haven't kept score. I keep making them all the time. And I want to thank all the rest of commissioners. There was a lot on the agenda tonight and I think we did a good job. So thank you.
Commissioner Kober.
I also would compliment the two new members. You did your homework. You really jumped in. You were appropriate with your discussions, your points, and welcome aboard.
Commissioner Kober.
Yeah, I was at the dinner and got a chance to meet you guys. It was a pleasure meeting you, but welcome aboard officially. So appreciate it.
I would like to echo the same. And again, give a sincere gratitude to Commissioner Kober for spending two years in this seat. We all appreciate it very much. I think it was a good two years of great, very well-run meetings. And again, thank you so much. Staff comments.
Yeah, a couple of quick things. We'd also like to welcome the new commissioners. Congratulations. This was a tough agenda tonight. So everybody did really well on that. And the new chair, congratulations as well. We do have the Planning Commission Academy coming up. Marcy, is that all coordinated?
Yeah, we have Commissioners Marlowe and Connelly signed up. I'm working with our finance department to get everything all tied up, you know, in a nice bow for you. So once I have that, I will get that over to you. But we do have you at least booked at a place to stay so far, so.
And that is a really great conference. I think you folks, you guys will learn a ton. I think I went my first year. I haven't been able to pry away time since, but it really is a useful time. And where is it this year? Oh, I'm sorry.
Actually Disneyland.
Oh, okay.[1559.22]